Cinema, cinema, moi je me fais du cinéma. Cinema, cinéma, 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 moi je me fais du cinéma.
I'm here.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Here.
Councilmember Grimes.
Here.
Councilmember Mail.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
President.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
And as you can tell, Councilmember Daniels Cohen is joining us remotely by phone. And so we will make sure that we do any votes by roll call. First thing, I want to say that there are no additional attend items this evening, but I want to point out a number of things on upcoming agendas. Just to remind people, if anybody is in here looking for the public hearing, the joint public hearing on the Enterprise Zone, that's across the hall in the Isaiah Room. That's happening right now, started at 7 o'clock. Next week, Monday, March 11th, we'll have a presentation from the Brendel Group, and that's the group that's been working on the sustainability coordination. And also a work session next week, the 11th sidewalks in the historic district. The following week, Monday, March 18th, we'll have our public forum on the Safe Grow Zone Initiative. And that's going to be, I think, the first hour of the meeting. And we'll have folks up here for that forum. And then the council will come up and we'll have the rest of the meeting. The following Monday, March 25th, Passover begins at sundown. And the way things work that week, we wouldn't be able to have a meeting until Thursday. So we're not going to have a meeting that week. So there will be no meeting Monday, March 25th, and no city council meeting that week. Monday, April 1st, we're due to have a presentation on the Anacostia, from the Anacostia Watershed Society briefing us on Sligo Creek and Long Branch watersheds. And we have tentatively discussion of proposed charter amendment text on elections and discussion of residency preferences and incentives for executive employees. That was originally scheduled for this evening, but because the city attorney couldn't be here, we've postponed it until she can. Just a reminder, Monday, April 8th, the acting city manager will be presenting her proposed FY 2014 budget. And the final item I want to point out is Tuesday, April 9th, is National Community Service Day. And so I don't have anything for the record, so we will now go to public comment. And that's a chance for anybody to speak to us about whatever you want to speak to us about, except if it's any comments on our special session items. Those are the first two on the agenda, which are the resolution authorizing the closing of unit block of Grand Avenue and the first reading ordinance awarding a contract for the chiller and two air handlers. So anything else on our work session or anything not on our agenda, and we'd welcome your comments. Please try and keep them to three minutes. We use the timer and identify yourself and come to the podium. And we'll go to Mr. Lovelace in the back first.
Hello, my name's Pat Lovelace, your official peace delegate. 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park. I just wanted to bring to your attention, again, the need to register to vote. Because if you've been following the news lately, I don't know if anyone has heard, but they're trying to, they want to try to gut the Voting Rights Act of 1965, which people have fought for many, many years to get. And people have lost their lives. And people have gotten beatings going over the Pettis Bridge in Montgomery to Selma, or Selma to Montgomery. But I think, you know, that we ought to show our respect for those people by getting out there and registering to vote. And then when it comes to November, vote. We have, we have city elections this November. So that's a good time to practice your voting, practice getting registered. It's so important now that we, we don't lose our right. Like I said earlier, our rights are ours. If we, if we don't use them, we could lose them. And this is a pretty good idea, what could happen. They're talking about gutting Section 5 of the Voting Rights Act, which, which hated so that some states would have to get, would have to get, go through the Department of Justice to have a, some kind of a hearing to be able to alter anyone's right to vote. And we're trying to save that, we're trying to save the Voting Rights Act. Because if people really care about each other in Tacoma Park and they care about their own rights, then it's time, you know, that they should come up and show it by getting out there and registering to vote and then voting. Because we are about to lose it if we're not careful. And also, again, the gun control. We, we could only, only abolish the assault rifles and the high-capacity magazines that go with them. And also the hollow-point bullets. If we could do that in a state and then regulate the handguns with the, with the background checks, universal background check, we could do something. And again, that's where our votes going to come in. What do we want our Congress and our Senate to do? That's where our votes going to come in. And it comes in handy sometimes. So people, remember, stop the guns and stop the violence. And remember, don't let them take away the Voting Rights Act of 1965. And I want to say hello to Doris Thompson. She did a really good job with my ponytail. Yep, anyone needs one done, I'll give her a call. Yep. But anyway, I just want to tell people how very important voting is right now. It's more important than it's ever been now. Because I don't want to see anyone lose their right to vote. Thank you very much. So get out there and register to vote and then get out there and vote.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Come up to the microphone.
Hello, my name is Joel Manville. And I'm here on behalf of Man Up. And I first heard about Man Up in 2009, when I first started coming to the recreation department. And when I first got involved with Man Up, I was a troubled youth. I kept getting in and out of trouble. But Man Up has got me on the right path. And it has helped me move on and better myself to get into college and major in mechanical engineer, auto mechanics. I do volunteer with Man Up, but I am not a Man Up, one of the Man Up staffs. And I would like to get this money for Man Up because it will help us get more staffs and it will help us get more days to have more people working for Man Up, to have dedicated workers coming to Man Up and helping the young youth with their schoolwork and making sure nobody's getting in and out of trouble and making sure everybody's staying on the right track. Man Up is here to help everybody, not just for the minorities, just for everybody in the community. And we are here to dedicate our youth, we are here to dedicate to our youth to show them that we need to do better things in life. And we need to give Man Up this money because it will help us show them that, it will help us go on more trips. It will help us see the better things in life. And that's all I have to say, even though it's not three minutes. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Love it, love it, love it.
I think there may be one or two more from Man Up who want to speak. Maybe we can get them all together.
How y'all doing today?
Well, good.
My name is Ibrahim Kande. And I live on Maple Avenue. And I'm a Man Up volunteer. And all I want to say is that Man Up is a great program for all of our kids, for your kids, and all of these kids behind me too. Because Man Up has changed me and it made me a better person today. And I feel like since last year and the way that I act this year, I've changed to be a better person. I feel like that Man Up will help children grow as a... I think Man Up will, will help our communities. And that...
Remember, you told me, your heart.
Yeah.
Doesn't have to be perfect, doesn't have to suck.
Yeah, and...
Can you tell me some of the things that Man Up does?
Oh, well, Man Up is like, is like a mentoring program where like the staff, where they, where the staff talk to us about like, how to like avoid violence and avoid certain crimes and, and like, how to... And to learn how to be responsible about things. And those are one of the things that Man Up has changed me. Because I've been more responsible as a person ever since I've been going to this program. When I first started going to this program, I started going because all of my friends were going. But once I actually sat down and manned up and heard all of the, heard all of the things that they talked about, it really touched me and it really touched my heart. And I hope that if one of your kids go there, I hope that it touches one of your kids' hearts. And yeah, that's all I have to say.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
You hear about voting?
Okay, yeah. We'll, we'll finish with any of the folks from Man Up and then we'll go to other folks. Thanks.
How you doing today? I'm doing quite similar. I live in Tacoma Park for a while now. I live in Hampshire Towers, that's where I basically grew up. So I was, I'm more familiar with the Tacoma Park side, the rec center on the other side. But yeah. Man Up, I want to just tell you that it really helped me a lot too. Because I started, I'm 22 now, and I was going to Man Up since I was kind of younger. So I've been here for a while now. And a lot of the stuff that they did, they helped us graduate, as in like help us with study courses and after-school learning little programs. Took us on little, took us on trips like the Black Wax Museum. And just a lot of fun activity that we didn't really have at first. So that's one of the things I want to tell you and what else? But I just think we need more funding in the program. Because they'd be wanting to take us more places, but it's just not a lot of funding, money to give to kids because a lot of kids don't have the money to put in. But yeah. They also helped me get in Montgomery College this year, so I started in the fall. They did a little program, I guess, with Montgomery College. So we'd be able to have money for classes in school. So that was really one of the good things I liked and I started in the fall. So I will complete that. And I just want to thank Brandon. If y'all can help us out with more funding in our program so we can keep a lot of the kids off the street, that would be a perfect thing for everybody. Because I've been through it, so I know it will help the young kids that started now. That's all I want to say.
Thanks very much.
Love it.
And if you want to remind us what Man Up stands for.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. My name is Brandon Johns. I'm the executive director of Making a New United People. That's the name, our actual name. The acronym we go by, my name is Man Up. It just kind of stands for just going over obstacles and things like that. It's not particular to any man or woman. It just means stepping over your obstacles and things in front of you. First of all, I want to say thank you to the mayor, actually. This is, this kind of spurred off a conversation you had when you attended one of our sessions a couple of weeks ago. And you had a question to our youth saying, what do we need? What does we need? And at that time, I think a lot of the youth said the programs they want and the things that can help them out in their community and what can really do things for them. And I think one of the main things they said is more programs like us. They said some other things, apprenticeship programs, some job programs, but a lot of it was things like us, programs like ours. I think they said programs like ours because honestly, we do a lot of things with these kids. It's more than just one thing. It's more than just college prep. It's more than just keeping them off the streets. It's actually all of that combined. And it's, we're really, what we say, a wraparound service. We do a lot with these kids. If it's on the weekend, we work with them then. And it's, it's, it's something that we love to do. We've been here doing it since day one. But some additional funding from the city would be extremely helpful, especially city like Tacoma Park, which has a rich history and for equality and helping people who need help. This would be important to do. Our program at this point, we've been here since March 2009. So now it's four years now. We've been doing a program diligently for four years now, every single Tuesday. But at this point, we wanted to expand our program. These kids need more help. I want to be here more days. I want to be able to give more time to them, more resources. Help them out, help more of them out to get into college and things like that. It's, it's, it could be slightly difficult in the dawning task, we think, but the support of Tacoma Park especially, this can happen. And I think of all places and all cities, Tacoma Park is, is an area and the city that should definitely see the value in helping their youth and helping their community become one. And that's what we're trying to do. And one thing I want to say, and, and that's just the brief kind of background on Man Up and what we do, and that's the really brief background. But that's what we do. I want to say thank you to the youth that actually came today. I'm not sure how many city council meetings they attended in the past, but I really appreciate the support they had. And I need to also show this to you guys. And these are from 14 to, actually from 13 to 17, well, 13 to 22-year-old youth right now. They could have been doing anything on a Monday. The dedication they showed to actually come here tonight and express how they feel and then support the program. I think that should tell you guys a lot about what we do and kind of the respect and love we have with our youth that we work with. So that's really it going forward. If anyone has any questions, please ask, but that's our program. Like I said, we hope we can somehow get the support from Tacoma City. And we appreciate you guys having us here. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you.
Brandon? Can you explain the mentors and how that works? Mentors, yes.
I mean, originally we started the program, it was, I graduated from Howard University. And real quick, just a little background on it. I worked for, I currently work for the NAACP. Before that, I worked for the House Judiciary Committee, so for Congress. We did a lot of research at the time, when I was a criminal justice kind of area, on what can help the communities out. So we decided, we saw that mentorship programs a lot helped the communities out. When the youth see people who resemble them, look like them, certain, somewhat young, relatively, when you can have the same experience backgrounds, you can share backgrounds so they understand where we're coming from and we understand where they're coming from. We accept people from all different backgrounds to come work with our youth. But we think a big part of our, our program is the fact that our mentors are relatively young, do come from similar backgrounds to the youth we serve. And we have been able to, I mean, we're, we're volunteers. I mean, we're doing this out of love and dedication from our hearts. I mean, these are, these are, for the most part, all college alumni, alumni who are now somewhat in professional ranks and come back every Tuesday to work with the youth to give back to our community. It could be straining at times. I'm sure everyone has, all of our mentors have full-time jobs on the side, as do I. But we come here out of love and just really wanting to help our community out, help the Tacoma, the Tacoma Park community out. I'm a resident here as well. So I thought it was important for us to come back here. And that's kind of the moral background on the mentors. I hope that was the answer to that.
Thanks, that helps a lot.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Brandon.
So to wrap up, right, at least this small section of what we're talking about. You, Man Up is about Tacoma Park.
And if you can tell us your name, Terrell.
Oh, sorry, I'm Terrell North, I live in Ward 6. Hi, Brad. I got involved with it, I also went to Howard University, actually like a couple of other people in the science and on the stage. And I also used to work on the Hill. So a lot of these issues are dear and dear to my heart. And it was actually walking out of, feeling very frustrated, actually, walking out of a council meeting a few years ago, that was the first time I met Brandon, first time I heard about Man Up. And it was like, oh, this needs to be done. These kids need help. And it happens every day. As a matter of fact, the first person you heard speak, you know, who wants to major in mechanical engineering, he's going to hang out with this architect here. He doesn't even know it yet. But this architect right here is going to hang out with that engineering student and convince him he wants to go into architecture or something like that because he's also an artist. So, and these same kids are going to be playing basketball in that man's church because that's an agreement that we already worked out. So I'm only here to say, very, very briefly, that the program is changing people's lives. Two of the people that you spoke with today got into the program because of their criminal records, right? They were under arrest. They were going in the exact opposite direction. Brandon's day job is he works on voting rights at the NAACP and things like that. He's an expert in dealing with some of the issues you're going to be talking about tonight, as a matter of fact. But the key piece of it is that, that whole school to prisons pipeline, Man Up exists to help the city take that to a schools to society pipeline. And we've mentioned, we've had young people that we've helped get into, helped get into college, helped pay for college. What Man Up really needs is the stability that would come from actually really us all putting our money where our mouth is. And I'm just a board member and a volunteer. Brandon does so much with these kids, it blows my mind to see... They already told you where they, where they come to where they're going. And we're just here to say, thank you for being our partner already and giving us the space to work. But we need to grow that partnership and make that partnership even stronger.
Do you have any paid staff?
No, it's all volunteer at this point. And no matter how long our day is.
Terrell, how much of the program is in the rec center?
Well, all of the, the program takes place Tuesday nights here at the rec center. The, the goal is to be able to expand to another night because the main things that gets mentioned were they want more of Man Up. And not to sort of toot our own horn, but it's really, they want more of interaction. So the kids come from all over the city. We have a couple, a couple of kids I got to take home tonight, as a matter of fact, from over where we live. So that's it, most of them are from right here.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, other people who want to speak? What, what? No, no, open floor, anybody wants to talk?
Good night, everyone. My name is Corey Thompson. I'm living Tacoma Park and I'm here with...
Pastor Mark Greiner from the Tacoma Park Presbyterian Church.
And we, we're speaking on behalf of the Community Kitchen. And how I got involved is, a few people may already know my story, but our son passed two years ago. And the community reached out and helped us tremendously. And in effort to be part and involved in the community that supported us so much and give back a little, I reached out to Lorie. And she told me about Community Kitchen and the involvement of the church and donating the space and having that openness in that community that Tacoma Park is all about. And I'm here to say that, you know, farm the freezer, helping feed those who really need help. And at the time, I didn't work for a year because I was devastated by how my things, and I'm self-employed, but there were meals showing up on my doorstep because of programs that helped us out through there. And if the Community Kitchen can do just a portion of what I got, it would be a load for, you don't know how much, just knowing where a meal is coming from or the ability to provide a micro enterprise that can grow into something stronger. And that's what the Community Kitchen can do for a lot of people here. And I'm giving it 110%. And hopefully, we can get some of these Man Up kids to come and learn how to make a meal and get some greens in them. Because greens going to meet you mean and tall and strong and get your mind going. So, and that, and that's from a Howard alum and, you know, Brandon is, I met him two weeks ago and inspired me to even continue to go do the things that I'm doing now. And that's all I have to say. Are you, thanks very much.
Any questions? Did you have any questions about the funding request that we had put forward?
If we do, they'll come up in the discussion tonight. But as far as the public comment, I want to keep going on that.
Okay, great. I'd just like to make, just make one more brief comment. Mr. North had mentioned how Man Up is playing basketball. And the gym with the church, right in front of that gym is where the kitchen is. And part of our conversation with the Tacoma Park Rec Department, they've identified real interest among young people in our community, both to learn more about nutrition, but especially to learn how to cook. This facility provides lots of classes, but there's no kitchen to provide cooking classes. That's one of the things that we can provide in our space. So that's one example about how we want to be a community partner with the space that we're providing.
Great, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Lucas Ritchie, I'm 16. I've lived here my entire life. And I just wanted to come and show my support for the Charter Amendment to lower the voting age and pass same-day registration. I think that it, it's a good step to get young people involved in the governmental system. And just like, I, I feel as if, if I cannot vote until I go off to college, it will not be the same experience as if I grow up or as a 16 and 17-year-old voting. And that I, it will become more deeply instilled in the children and they will continue to vote for the rest of their lives.
I think as, yeah, I'm Nick Byron. Lived here my whole life, lived down the street from Lucas. I think going on what he said about going off to college, we, we lived here our whole life not being able... life not being able to have a say in what's going on, and you know, maybe not even think of it, but now that this is coming about, we are thinking about what we can do and how we can affect the things going on around us with our vote. But if we don't have the opportunity, then we leave, and the kids our age now, coming into our age, also have nothing to say, and then they go off to college and it's sort of this cycle of not really being able to affect the kids that have experienced Tacoma Park. And, I don't know, just for an example, a park down our street that I think me and Lucas both held very dear to us, was, and I don't know, this might have nothing to do with like actual voting, but it was, it was torn down and for, for many reasons, probably for good reasons, but basically, I, I felt like I loved this park and it was being turned into something I didn't love, and I had no say about, you know, what to put in, what to do. I went to the meeting, but it was sort of like, oh, you're a kid, like, I don't know. So this, this seems like a great opportunity for us to, you know, be kids but not be kids and, you know, say things that relate to kids and, you know, we're part of this community as much as anyone else, so I think, yeah, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Hi, yeah, my name's Isabel Hendricks, I also have lived in Tacoma Park my whole life, and I just want to agree with Lucas and Nick and what they've said. I think that nationally, we see so many young people are so disengaged from politics and so disengaged from what really is going to impact their life in the long run, and I think to break that cycle, you've got to let us have a voice and be involved, because I know that if people at my school, if people in the neighborhood, if we can do something, then I know we'll get out and do it, so, thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Kevin O'Connor, I'm a student at Montgomery Blair and I just live up the hill from here. I truly believe that community building can be extended into the younger population here. My father owns the Tacoma Thunderbolts, I work there every summer, because we believe that we're assisting in building a community, that we're, you know, having a place for kids to have their summer camp, to play baseball and softball at, and to really, you know, draw people together. And as we've seen from all these people here, they care about this community, they want to be able to help assist it and they care about one another. And as such, that, you know, we, we don't have any say, we can't, we have this option to be able to come here and ask you guys to consider our position, but that's really it. And it all comes down to, we want to be able to assist in this community. We live here all the time, you know, we've grown up here, and I plan to be able to have Tacoma Park be my home always, even if my job takes me halfway around the world, I still want Tacoma Park to be my home. I plan to be able to live here all my life. And truly, this just would, you know, extend that gratitude that we do have a say in helping build this community as we feel. And I know you assisted us with the Thunderbolts and that it truly is that one minor thing that we have that, of community building, and that's what it all is truly about. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Dylan, I live right up the street, just like all these other people. Basically, I'm just going to reiterate what these people said, because there is power in numbers. But, like, I've lived here all my life and I love every part of Tacoma Park, and it would just feel so good to be able to say that, like, I voted for someone who helped change an aspect that, like, I supported or that I was a part of, and it would just feel really good, and I also think it would help bring the community together, because there is that feeling that all the young people don't really understand or can comprehend all that goes on in the city council and even nationally. So having that participation in the process of creating the council would be a great opportunity.
Thank you.
My name is Paul Munger, I'm 16, I live in Tacoma Park like all these other people. And I think the voting age should be lowered to 16, because I'm, I'm personally a politically informed person, but I think a lot of youth aren't politically informed, and if they have the opportunity to vote, then they will have more of a drive to be politically informed. And even though this is just for local politics, it'll extend to, even though they won't be able to vote for national or state politics, it'll extend for their, like, for them to strive to be more politically informed in general, and it'll help make more politically informed community. Yeah, thanks.
Thanks.
I'm Baghiri, and I live in Tacoma Park too. I'm 14, so I wouldn't really be able to vote like this year, but in two years, I think it'd be really neat, because like, the, it'd be able to help people kind of grow and to engage with the people that, like, the place they're living. And a lot of people don't really feel comfortable engaging, but I think voting and knowing that, like, you do have a voice would be a really helpful way to get, like, your thoughts out there and to, like, fully be in Tacoma Park, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Robert Anderson, Woodland Avenue. First, I'd like to congratulate you folks in Man Up. I've been an educator for 42 years, and I've seen youngsters go through issues and problems. I know how difficult it is to change and to meet those problems head-on. And I congratulate each and every one of you for working through those problems. And realize that when you work through those problems, you get to be my age, you're still working through problems. So it's one of those processes that you still have to go through, but congratulations. I really appreciate the work that you go through.
I am here to speak in support of maintaining the 18-year-old age of voting. I think we can encourage more thoughtful consideration of lowering the voting age to 16. One of the things I noted with the young folks here, which were all very well-spoken, good kids, but they referred to themselves as kids and children. And that's one aspect that I want to make sure that we understand, that they are still kids and they are still children. As we look at the issue itself, we look at the rights and responsibilities that they have in society. And people say, well, they have the right to drive. Well, in fact, they don't have the right to drive without a parent's signature. They don't have anything other than a provisional license until they're 18, which is at least 18 months after they've gotten their provisional license, they go to a regular license at age 18. So at any time, a parent can withdraw the permission to drive. They cannot marry at age 16 or 17 without parental permission. They can't sign contracts. They can't work without a parental signature on a work permit. And in addition, Maryland doesn't allow them to work in certain positions. They can't work in dangerous positions, they can't work as roofers, there are other kinds of things that are limited because they are younger. They pay taxes if they work, but you can start working Maryland at age 14, so you're paying taxes at age 14. It doesn't start at 16. They can be searched at school. Adults can't be searched at a school. They can be searched for not probable cause, but reasonable suspicion by an administrator of school security. So there are a variety of issues that separate 16-year-olds from 18-year-olds. A board of education member, in fact, on the Board of Education, cannot be involved in all of the discussions and all of the votes on the Board of Education. If you change the age to reflect age of 16, why not allow them to be on the council or mayor? If you're considering that their ability to discern the issues is clear enough, then they should be able to be in your positions, voting on a $26 million budget. State law allows registration at age 16, there is no movement towards, towards voting at 16, it's only registration. And if I could just have one more second. In addition, Maryland has just moved the age of being able to leave school to 18. You can no longer leave school at age 16 as of 2017, it's moved to 18 or graduation. So even Maryland has moved that up some. So in summary, I would support leaving the voting age at age 18. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
It's Rob Ritchie, Tacoma Park resident. I actually wasn't going to speak after all these wonderful remarks, both from the Man Up speakers and then from the young people asking for a lower voting age, but I felt compelled to just comment on some of the points that were made on the last speaker, which are part of the conversation that you're having, which is terrific. And I want to cycle back to the earlier work session where this conversation came up, because I just felt so good about the ideas and thoughts you were having about how to bring more people in. Because you all have been candidates, you've all run, you've all known that that's what democracy is about, and you've all seemed eager to figure out ways to do that. So congratulations for the whole enterprise. And that's really what this conversation is about, the specific issue of lowering the voting age, because it's about bringing people in who I think are ready to come in. And I think that a couple parts, just in sort of the theory of it, is that if you're 16 and being able to vote, by the time you are 18, you will be, it'll already be the next election, right? So if you're 17, by the next election, you're going to be 19. So you will be governed by a city council that you are, you know, you are 18 and 19. So having had a chance to vote for that council as an 18-year-old, I think is, even in theory, a good thing. There's a good friend of ours who is a young woman who will be 18 three days after the 2016 presidential election. So she won't be able to vote for president until 2020, when she's almost 22, right? So she'll be governed by a government that she won't actually have a chance to vote for until she's in, well into her twenties, right? So that, so that that chance to be part of electing a government that as an adult you will be governed by, I think even in the theory, is a good thing. I think some of that litany of ways that 16 and 17-year-olds are treated differently than adults is actually a reflection of maybe lack of political power, kind of a conversation that we need to have. Like, when is it okay to, to start allowing people more of an equal, an equal ability to do things? And, you know, maybe 18 is the perfect age, maybe it's not, but, but actually kind of empowering people to, to participate politically helps that conversation move forward. So I think in general, and I just want to underscore, this is also about the same-day registration, which is a proposal of allowing more people to come in for you to be out there on the campaign trail, talk to someone and not have to worry about whether they're registered. That we are in the midst of this national debate about voting, some of what's going on with the Voting Rights Act that the first speaker was saying earlier, and I think for Tacoma Park to take this strong stand and say, we're about bringing people in, about encouraging people to participate, is terrific. So, more, more power to you.
Thanks very much.
Hi, I'm Liz Kurtz, and I'm from Crossroads Community Food Network, and we've been doing food access work in Tacoma Park since 2007 with ongoing support from the city. And we very much hope that the city will continue to invest in the kinds of programs that we bring to needy families in the city and in adjoining areas in the Tacoma Langley crossroads. And the city's investment in the programming has really given us a firm foundation that we've been able to use to bring in other programs that would not exist without your help. And one good example of that is the SNAP outreach program, and our SNAP outreach coordinator, Rosa Sanchez, is here with some of the, with a mom that she's helped to talk a little bit about the kind of difference that SNAP participation can make in families' lives. And I'll be here during the discussion if people have questions about the actual grant application. Rosa.
Okay, hello, everyone, good evening, buenas noches. I'm Rosa, and I do the SNAP outreach at the farmer's market, and this is some of the moms that I have helped through the summer. And without this program, I don't know what I would do with my moms, because they are very thankful for the program, and I'm thankful too, so I'm here just to, please, um, help us.
Hi, my name is Dora, I live in Tacoma Park. I got the food time. I, I got the food time in market, farming market, and when, we know got the food time, I don't know what happened. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have been doing the SNAP outreach for a couple of years, and it's something that every time, when it's June, we open the farmer's market, I get so excited, because there's a lot of moms that come and apply. I do the pre-screening, and most of them, 90% of the moms, they do qualify. And Tacoma Park residents, a lot of them.
Many, many, the U.S. Department of Agriculture has put a real premium on working with Latino families, because Latino families are very underrepresented in the SNAP program and very often don't come in to many of the main application points. So Rosa and her team work in community settings, including the Crossroads Market, the WIC office, it's at 7676 New Hampshire in the New Ave part of Tacoma Park, and really does outreach that reaches individuals where they are in the city. So we've really greatly appreciated the chance to make that happen and hope it can continue. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Hello, everybody. This is so exciting. Democracy is happening all around us, and I think that the, I'm Cynthia Terrell, I'm married to Rob Ritchie for full disclosure, and the parent of a couple of the kids, but I feel honestly like, wow, this is fabulous. We, we are living in a vibrant community where kids come out, young fabulous people come out, talk to their city council members, and I think in so doing have earned the right to participate. But I think the right to vote, though we don't actually technically have one in the Constitution, should be something that we're really encouraging everybody to, to take advantage of, and become informed and become involved and to share the enthusiasm for their community. And I can't think of any better thing for Tacoma Park to do, now that it has set the stakes high on a number of other issues where we're really trying to come together and build communities and strong communities and strong kids to really explore expanding voting rights to 16-year-olds and same-day registration. The package of those two things seems like a fabulous thing to do. So I support you in this conversation, and I really hope you'll consider doing it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you all. We will move along with our agenda, and the next item is council comments. Councilmember Grimes.
My only comment is to thank everyone that's come out tonight, and I wish to add that in my 15 or so months on the council, I think this has been already the best council meeting I've attended.
Councilmember Daniels, call.
Yo, thank you. Hey, I'm going to underline what Seth Grimes, I think that was Seth, said. The, this, in my 15 months as a council member, this is the most exciting council meeting I've listened to, because I'm listening far, far away. My hat is off to Brandon Johns and the Man Up guys. Fabulous, fabulous that you guys showed up here tonight and spoke about your program. Brandon and my paths crossed, probably when your program was just getting started, at least four years ago, about some graffiti that was down in Opal Daniels Park. And we really, really, I really, really appreciate everything he's done, everything Terrell North's done, everything all the volunteers have done, and everything that's happened with, with all the people who participated in the Man Up program. I'm, I'm just thrilled that you, you all came and spoke tonight. They were actually in the Fourth of July parade with me and the Recreation Department. I hate to say four years ago, but I think that's when it was, so my hat's off. Huge gold stars to what you guys are doing. I really, really, I can't say enough good things about you, I just, it's, it's just, it warms my heart. On top of that, to have so many people come and speak tonight in such passionate ways about what they truly believe in, and so many young people, you know, I'm like, wow, I'm bummed I'm not sitting there in my chair actually listening to you face-to-face. I'm, I'm really upset about that, but my, my hat is off to all of you. It's really an exciting, exciting moment for the council, so many, so many people came to speak. Now, now, after all that excitement, I'm going to tell you a little about, about me right now. I'm home, I'm actually overwhelmed at, at, and needing to figure out, that's why I'm not there tonight, what, what I need to have for myself at home, you know, how I can get around, what's happening, where everything is going, where to put things so that they're easily accessible for me. I had the opportunity to go to see the- I had the opportunity to go to see the radiologist doctor today. I spoke to her about the 5K challenge, Safe Roadways to School, on May the 5th, and wondered if I could be in that. She went, what? And so I may not make it this year, though she said if I did it on a walker, so look out. I may just get me a specially-made walker to see if I can do the 5K, down and back, down the creek and back. I'm holding out for it. I'm always last anyhow. So it doesn't, that part doesn't matter, just doing the 5K will be important to me. Super and huge gold stars to Mayor Williams for actually keeping up with Ward Three and making sure that they got all the pertinent information that they've needed over these past almost four weeks. I really appreciate that kind of, oops, I've got a catfight going on here. Sorry. Now we got it stopped. All right, sorry. You know, for him to get, Jack! For him to get all the information out. Now, lastly, sorry, folks, I, oops. Really exciting news is the Tacoma Park newsletter is back out again. And if you didn't get it today, make sure you look in your mailbox tomorrow or the next day. One more time, everything that's going on in the city, all the exciting things that have happened, that are going to happen during the month of March are in the newsletter. The newsletter is something you don't recycle. You hold on to it for the whole month of March and go to so many activities, they're all in there. What's most important and most exciting is the Recreation Department's Spring and Summer for 2013 guide from April through August. Anything you want to know about what you can do with the Recreation Department shows up in this guide. Not only that, it's really, really exciting. So much, it's in color, there's so much going on in there. Huge, huge, and great globs of gold stars to the Recreation Department. So that's it for me, I think. Recreation Department, one more time, has outdone themselves for coming up with this really great example of all the things that they have going on. And I thank you for listening to me, and I will be back at the council meeting if I have to crawl in there on my hands and my knees next week. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thanks, Dan. Councilmember Daniels, call. And I'm glad the catfight was there, not here on the dais.
I know, definitely, we had a big one going on here.
Councilmember Mail.
Thank you. Thanks, Kay. You know, first, I want to say again, thank you to all the people who came out tonight. You know, if you think about the folks who are here from the Man Up program, some of them are adults now, but some of them are still kids. And unlike almost everybody else who was in this room to speak about grants this week or the previous week or the week before that, if their councilman or woman does not vote for their choice of funding, those 16 and 17-year-olds can't do anything about it. They go home, they don't have any, there's no consequence. If you establish the right for 16 and 17-year-olds to vote, then they can create accountability. That's what it's about. And, you know, in particular, at a time when investments in youth in general in America are going down, this is a little way to address that balance. I want to speak about the development-related hearing that's going on at the same time. And I know, I very much hope that we're going to get into it at a later council meeting. But this issue of the boundaries of essentially a special taxation zone or a tax credit zone along New Hampshire Avenue, and changes to that zone are a real concern to members in Ward Two, to community members in Ward Two, and the very late notice, very little notice that was provided about some of the changes that people view that are really going to affect the potential character of their neighborhood. And so, you know, first, I proposed to my colleagues that I really would like to see us exclude the McLaughlin School property from the proposed zone or credit area for credit. But second, that we also have a longer conversation about development and about the use of that tax credit opportunity and where it's appropriate. To me, it's a policy question that should come before council. And I'm disappointed that it hadn't done so. And I know many of us, probably all of us, will get a good summary of what's happening in the hearing across the hall, which may still be going on. And I hope we can come back to that at a point in the near future, enough to affect this decision by both the city and the county in terms of what the boundaries are. So thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. I want to say thank you to everyone that came out tonight. I especially want to thank Brandon and Terrell North, and I wanted, and the members of Man Up. And I would like to extend an invitation to Brandon to come back and speak about voting rights, since that is something he does in his day job. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I guess all the Man Up people have finally slipped out the back door. I think that their presence, the young men and women from Man Up, is something that says an awful lot about young people influencing the council. I mean, I realize I'm not saying anything negative about voting, for Pete's sakes, but I'm just saying that if young people want to influence, as clearly all the young people we saw here in the last half an hour or so, the council's decision-making, the way to do that is to do it the way the Man Up people did it tonight. Articulate or inarticulate makes no difference. These young people made a huge impression on me, and to appreciate that, to help me to appreciate even more than I already did, the effect of the Man Up program when so many efforts to help young people seem to be good ideas but don't seem to work. This one's been around for four years, and it's working, and it's deserving. So that would be my comment with regard to, in regard to having young people vote at 16 and 17. I think it's better for the young people, if they've got needs, to show up here and talk to us about it. We're here every Monday night. A vote is just a vote. And maybe it's fun, but that's not how to really influence change in the city, in my opinion, and to get the programs or the recreational opportunities that young people need. With regard to Councilmember Mail's comment, I would just like to add my concurrence. The McLaughlin School property is one of the largest, if not the largest undeveloped tract of land that's developable in the city. I mean, I realize it has a school on it, but in terms of its potential, it's pretty significant. And it's just a mile or less from the district line, which means it's a pretty valuable piece of property, just purely from a marketing point of view. And it seems to me that it'd make an awful lot of sense to sort of pause in this process, back up a few steps, and have a community visioning, or whatever word you want to use, process that involves all the residents, obviously, who live proximate to that property, not to mention others in the city. Speaking of development, I had this morning an opportunity to meet with the property owner of a small shopping center at Carroll Avenue and University Boulevard, where the Shell Station is located, in the 7-Eleven. It's in my ward. It's called, the developer or the owner is Horning Brothers. There's about six businesses there. They've owned that property for many, many years. The gasoline station has been a shambles and a blight, and I've told them that. And I was in their offices today downtown Washington. We had a good conversation about the problems there. They're working on resolutions to that. In fact, they've already signed a new lease for a new, a person who's going to operate that gasoline station as a gasoline station, rather than a parking lot for used cars. I'm thrilled about that. So my effort was to establish a working relationship with the company, Horning Brothers, that owns that property. And I think we made the very first positive steps in helping them understand that the city really wants to help them partner with us, and to understand what their potentialities are for making that property into something that's a real attractive entrance, because Carroll Avenue is one of the main entrances into the city of Tacoma Park. Just want to comment one, two things. The New Hampshire Gardens Neighborhood Association had a meeting last week. It elected a new president. Her name is Holly Robertson. She lives on Glen Side Drive, and she has now taken over that association. And I think the city will find her to be a person who's responsive. And I would also say, I will be absent from the city council meeting on its, at its March, on the March 18th meeting. I will not be here, and I don't think I'll even be able to communicate by phone. Thank you.
Okay, I just want to mention a couple things that have been happening over the last week, and then a couple that are upcoming. First off, I wanted to mention Space Day. I had a great time coming here on Saturday for Space Day. I didn't jump the line to meet the astronaut who was here. That was, that was hard to do, since it appeared that there were always at least 30 people in line waiting. And it was taking a while, because he was taking a fair amount of time with each child who was doing that. There was an interesting space suit, there was lots of information, a number of people here from NASA. And I also heard good reports about the music event that was in this room as well. So I think it was a really successful day, and I was glad to see that. And I was pleasantly surprised at the participation by the community. It seems like it was something that was really valuable and provided a lot of people with a role model of somebody who could be an astronaut and open up some interesting possibilities for kids getting into STEM. The MML Tax Duplication Workshop, the work group that I put together is continuing to meet. We're coming up with some interesting possibilities about potentials for state legislation on tax duplication issues. I don't want to kind of be premature with what we're coming up with, but we're continuing to work, and there will be plenty of information available at the conference in Ocean City in June. And it looks like some good possibilities for getting some legislation introduced to maybe finally deal with this issue in a more comprehensive way. I had a meeting with Montgomery College Provost Brad Stewart on Friday. He was briefing me on some things, and I think we'll try and get him here to a council meeting at some point, probably in April, probably in the middle of budget, to brief us on some of the things upcoming at Montgomery College. I had a meeting this morning with District Councilmember Kenyon McDuffie from Ward Five. Very interesting talking with him and getting to know him, and talking about some of the issues that are common to both the districts Ward Five and Tacoma Park, particularly centering around the Anacostia watershed. Also, don't want to forget that the Maryland Municipal League Montgomery Chapter Annual Luncheon is Thursday in Annapolis. And any council members who want to go and carpool, I'm available. Also, I know that there was some interest in potentially attending some sessions at the National League of Cities Conference that starts here Sunday. And I know that the city is in the process of rejoining the National League of Cities. So that opens up some other possibilities for council members to participate in the National League of Cities. And I, in response to points raised by Councilmember Mail about the Enterprise Zone hearing that was taking place this evening across the hall, I think we'll look at what the timelines are for what we have to do, and potentially kind of lengthen that process a little bit in what we have to do. But I'm not sure when we have to respond. But I'll do everything I can to try and make it so we have some more conversation about it. And I think the Ethics Commission has reached a point where we may have ethics forms.
They were meeting tonight to give their final stamp of approval.
Okay. So we'll, those of us on the council will have an opportunity, very shortly, to have the final adopted ethics forms for the cities, and we can begin filling them out, since it may take a while. And they're due, is it April?
April 30.
April 30. So if people don't want to be trying to do those in the middle of doing taxes, I've encouraged the Ethics Commission to get through that process and give us something that's final that we can deal with, since we'll be feeling our way through that process for the first time. And that's all I've got. Councilmember Grimes.
Yeah, I, now that the room is cleared out a little bit, I see that Evan Glass, the Chair of Montgomery County Silver Spring Citizens Advisory Board, has joined us. So welcome, Evan.
Any other council comments? City managers' comments?
I just, yeah, I was going to mention the astronaut. I guess I'm a fan of astronauts, so it was fun to see him here with, one of the things that was very exciting is that they were doing the sign-up for the Tacoma Park Silver Spring baseball and softball in the morning, just as the astronaut was arriving. So those who came to sign up for their kids for, you know, kind of eight-year-old softball, were also able to talk to the astronauts. And the ones who came to see the astronauts, like, oh, I could sign up for baseball, you know? And so it was a really, it was a, we couldn't have planned it better, and we didn't plan it that way, but it worked out very nicely. Just, I was just going to mention that there is predictions of snow this week, and that makes everyone nervous. We will be trying to get outward, depending on when the snow hits. It sounds like in this area, it might be Wednesday during the day and later afternoon when it actually starts accumulating. But we would really encourage people to not park on the streets, if they're able to park in a driveway, or to park on alternate sides of the streets. And on Wednesday, it's an even day, so we would urge people who have to park on the street to park on the even side of the street. We'll try to get the word out, and it's a voluntary thing, but it does help get the snowplows through quickly. And the other thing, just as a reminder, in the mornings on weekdays, the city follows the federal government's closing announcement. So if we are closed, if the federal government does say it's closed, not just liberal leave kind of thing, we will close then. We'll get the word out on WTOP and with our various social media and the website. Yes?
If the city finds it necessary to enforce these snow emergency routes in these eastern sunblock streets, we'd please see that notice goes out.
Absolutely, we would certainly do that. Yes.
In terms of the SHA MOU, or we, is that signed?
The MOU is signed, and it will be filed in all the appropriate places. I still haven't, well, it gets to be, I mean, it gets to be in the, attached to the city code and a variety of other things. I still haven't gotten the final word that the legislation got filed and is in the process. And so.
We can see if there's anything on the state legislative website. It wasn't there at noon.
And when, whenever there's a location where residents could go and public, and access the copy of the MOU, could you just let council know that?
Yes, and we'll get it on the website, too. Here.
Thank you.
We'll make sure it's very, very easy to find.
Thank you.
That's all.
And not everybody gets anxious when there's a forecast of snow.
Okay.
I don't, I look forward to it.
You should see what happens to my phone line and my email box when the least thought.
Anything else, any questions for the city manager? Okay, legislative update.
I think we'll, I think you know more than I at this point.
The highway user revenue money is still in, as far as I know. We'll hear this week the reports from the Appropriations Committee, subcommittees, and the We'll hear this week the reports from the Appropriations Committee Subcommittee, and so far, everything looks good for keeping that in, and we finished last week with the testimony on the electronic notice for posting things on the website and other ways. It sounds like that is going to have some amendments that will probably extend the date when that actually takes effect, probably two years.
That's Bill 1508.
Oh, good.
Okay, good. So, that made it in the last, it may be, it may be the last bill number for the session. And there's one or two late-breaking bills that were coming up today in Annapolis that were potentially needing comment from municipalities, but I haven't had really time to investigate what they are, so things are moving along quickly, and so far, everything is moving the way we want it to. And now that the Tacoma Park bill is in.
We get to laugh at that?
Yes, so.
Again, it's Bill 1508, House Bill 1508.
And I know that all bills that are late filed, that go to the Rules Committee, when they do go to the committee, they are testimony by sponsor only. Okay, that's it for those preliminary items. We will move to the special session. The first item is a resolution authorizing a temporary partial closure of the unit block of Grant Avenue for several Tacoma Junction events. And did Sarah make it across?
I think Sarah's still across the hall.
So, Jessie, I think you were going to do that?
I can think.
Or Suzie?
Yeah, and Seth can do it better than I. Basically, we're proposing a closure several times on the block of Grant Avenue that's closest, intersects with Carroll, about half of that block, as a place to do some programming in the Old Tacoma Business Association area, and that would be Tacoma Park Earth Day Festival on April 21st, and then a Grant Avenue Market. And this is a way to keep the parking lot available for parking, and also kind of provide some excitement in the Tacoma Junction area. Just to make sure that it's kind of clear to all that this is a city activity, we propose a resolution that closes the street temporarily during those times. There's been outreach to the people who are affected, but it's nice to have this on the record. If there's any questions, happy to answer.
Would somebody like to move the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Smith, second by Councilmember Seaman. Is there further council discussion? Councilmember Grimes?
Thank you. The programs that have been proposed by the Tacoma Business Association under contract with the city look like great programs to me, so I'm really glad that we could do this. I will note that access to the apartment building, vehicle access, I should say, to the apartment building on Grant Avenue is not going to be cut off. Access to four of the houses, there will be. Well, this isn't a case of a resident-initiated street closure where a petition with a threshold of 60% of households is required. Councilmember Daniels Cohen, I believe, and Laura Barclay from the Business Association did get three of the four households to sign on in agreement to the closure. Thank you.
Other council comments? Is there any public comments? Oh, Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Yes, I'm just, you know, I'm thrilled a lot, but I'm really thrilled that the Old Tacoma Business Association is actually taking on the junction and making it function. This is so exciting to have the Earth Day being celebrated at the junction by not only the Co-op, but the Old Tacoma Business Association and any of the businesses along that other side of Carroll Avenue. That's number one. Number two, to have the three separate dates for the market, I'm going to call it a Grant Avenue market, I know it had a different name in the information, is just, I mean, it's beyond thrilling for me, because these are the kinds of things that the Tacoma Junction Task Force was asking, and Old Tacoma Business Association jumped in. It wasn't just here, but also with food trucks. They're doing everything they can to create interest in actually foot traffic in the junction, and I just live two blocks away from it, so I'm thrilled. It's in my, it's in Ward Three, and I just, I can't say enough good things about what they're doing, doing here, and hopefully, I'll be able to, hopefully be able to participate in Earth Day. I've participated in the last four or five years, maybe this year I'll get a chance to participate as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional council comments? Any public comments on this resolution? Okay, seeing none, and given that Councilmember Daniels Cohen is participating remotely, will the court please call a roll?
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaman?
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Councilmember Mail?
Aye.
Councilmember Grimes?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Aye. That resolution passes seven to nothing. The next item is a first reading ordinance awarding a contract to complete the installation of the chiller and two air handler units, and Public Works Director is here, and I hope you're feeling okay.
Well, I lost my voice, so I encourage you to read the, read the cover sheet. The city was the recipient of a grant from the Energy Administration last year, and we did a number of energy efficiency improvements in this building. Unfortunately, the contractor we selected, which was the low bidder, in which we all made the recommendation, and you agreed to award the contract, who did not complete the project entirely. We've had the second lowest bidder come in to take a look at the existing installation. It is functioning, but the controls are not working to their maximum efficiency. So, we had a price proposal from that vendor, American Mechanical Services, to complete the rest of the work that remains undone, and we've talked with the city attorney about the appropriateness of using the second lowest bidder in this way to try to complete the work. She thought it was appropriate, but because it is not in this year's budget, it needs two readings of the ordinance to do, to allow the award. Just a couple other comments. The original contractor was to finish the work by June 30th and did not complete it, and paid the penalty of a loss of $1,000 a day for every day of delay beyond that. So, he made a significant less amount of money than he was originally, had the opportunity to for the project. So, even with this money for the American Mechanical Services to come in and complete the job, the actual job itself will not have cost the city the original $197,000, it'll be something less than that, and I think that's all explained in the ordinance itself. So, we're trying to make the best out of an unfortunate situation. The equipment is, was well-installed and is functioning, it just needs some additional control work.
Okay. Thanks. Would somebody like to move the ordinance?
I'll move it.
Second.
Second, moved by Councilmember Schultz, second by Councilmember Mail. Council discussion? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, will the court please call a roll?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Aye.
Councilmember Mail?
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaman?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. I think maybe the thing to do is, if we take our quick break now, because the next item will probably go on for a while, so we'll take a very short break, and we'll come back for our two work session items. grant requests. We had some discussion on this January 28th, and I don't know, does the clerk or the acting city manager want to make some comments at this point?
There were just a couple of things I'd like to point out, and that is to remind the council how this whole process got started originally. This program was developed, I think in 2009, as a way to avoid having organizations come to the city all throughout the year requesting funds. And so, this program was developed so that all the requests would come, to encourage all the requests to come at one time, so that the council could decide what its priorities were for providing this kind of support, and request that the city manager include it in her proposed budget. And then the final decision typically would not be made until the budget itself is adopted, so that if the council felt there were funds available, it may want to award additional money, or by the same token, may decide that there really isn't funding to provide everything it had thought it might want to. So, just wanted to remind you that, how this, why this process was developed, and it is interesting that once we started to advertise that people, that groups could apply, they did. So, which as was intended, so that the money wouldn't always be going to the same small group of, not that it was, but so that wouldn't always go to the same organization, so that everyone had the same opportunity. But over the years, the number certainly has increased, and also the amount, the requests have increased pretty substantially.
This total is $225,000.
Right, right.
My sense is, we haven't been anywhere near that in previous years.
Right. I did bring money about what was awarded last year, I mean, money.
I think it was $130,000.
But now I can't find it.
I think it was $130,000 last year.
Was it? Okay, yeah.
And did that include items that we have removed from this process, like the $30,000 for OTBA?
I just.
I think it did.
I can't remember. I added up the agenda item numbers.
Right.
Because if you want to say something about what was removed this year?
Last year?
This year. Like, the OTBA.
Oh, yes, correct. OTBA is just now incorporated into the HCD budget.
And that was $30,000.
And that, right, $30,000 for this year. And then, we had wondered if the council wanted to consider taking something like the Independence Day Committee, if in fact, the council is committed to funding that program.
Every year.
Every year, shouldn't, should that maybe just be included in the budget as well? The Folk Festival, the city has not actually funded the Folk Festival repeatedly, but has, for the past couple of years, provided money for them. And the other thing I wanted to say is that, I think I could speak for the acting city manager, if I may, in that, that she is really hopeful that the council will provide some direction this evening, as to what its priorities are for funding.
That's probably safe to say.
And do you want to say something about the type of process that would be most helpful for you? I have a feeling there may be more than one process that would be helpful.
Well, there's a couple of things. I need to have some sense of what to put in the proposed budget, and so that can be an identification of specific projects, or programs, or general programs, that I'm supposed to guess what you mean, or a cap of an amount of money, and then you work it out a little bit later, but I need to be able to have a clue as to, as to an amount to put in the budget. And I think, as Jessie mentioned, there's, there are some activities, if you feel that it's always going to be a continuing, an continuing expenditure, you don't have to decide that tonight, but if that's something through this process of discussion that you identify, then it makes sense to take it out of this list, and have a different, have a list of something that may change, or that you may decide, you know, this year, we're going to focus on this kind of topic, or advancing this goal. You know, so I think you have a number of ways to look at that. For my purposes, within the next week or so, I need to have a number that I plug into the budget.
And then there's the thought that, given some of the conversations we've had, we might want to consider, after we've done this year's, having come back and talk about potentially a different process.
Right. One of the things that has been raised is perhaps having the Small Grants Committee or another committee do some kind of first cut, or there may be some criteria by which you want to have these kind of prescreened before you make the decisions on them. So, there's a lot of options that you can pursue. Did you have some other ideas, too?
That was what I was thinking about, and has the clerk had any discussion with the Small Grants Committee about whether they're, whether they've had any discussion about potentially expanding their role from small grants to large grants?
Well, a number of them have certainly responded to me that they're interested in exploring or providing some input. They would, they haven't met and haven't necessarily committed to being a part of this process, but I think they're definitely willing to provide their expertise.
And how large is that group?
There are eight members, right now.
Because usually, when they come before us, it tends to be a lot fewer than that, and we might think that it's just a small number.
Right, no, there are, there are eight appointed members, and a few will be up for reappointment, if the council so chooses. There are terms, some of the terms end June 30th.
Okay. And just by way of making sure we have all of the, kind of the preliminaries, that we have a clear understanding of those, can you remind me on the, on the chair proposal, where we stand on anything on that for this year?
That's a good question. We had a discussion last week on the, on the request for $20,000 out of this year's budget. I'm intending on putting that as part of a budget amendment for you to consider next week.
And, and that was in addition to this request, not?
That's correct.
Not removing a piece of this?
That's right. The $20,000 was for the activities that they had been, had applied for a state grant for for this current year.
Right, so that, we should keep that in mind, but it doesn't change this request?
That's correct.
Okay. Is there anything else that anybody has a question on, just in terms of kind of where we are in process and potential? Councilmember Grimes?
I don't, I don't think this is that kind of question, but it is a question of fact. The Tacoma Langley Crossroads Development Authority says that of the $46,15, $2,500 would be provided by a grant, but that's not part of their application. Could you just confirm that in reality, then, the large grant application is $2,115?
Sarah Danes had indicated that the, that program, the Community Gardens Greening Grant Program, could provide, out of that budget, $2,500 towards this project, so that it would reduce the amount needed. It's all city money ultimately, but different sources.
Would she have spent it on something else if it, would she spend it on something else if it weren't transferred here?
My sense is.
I don't think they don't have enough takers.
Yeah, my sense is they're looking for people, groups who want that money, yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Mail?
I just have two process questions before we get into our discussion. The Small Grants Committee, do they do any sort of conflict of interest sort of consideration as they go through small grants now? So, for example, if one of them was on the board of, I can't remember our small grants, the Women's Business Network, for example, last year, would they deal with that issue, or has that come up? It just hasn't come up maybe yet?
I don't think it's come up. I don't think it's come up, but.
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah.
And my second question for the acting city manager was, you identified a number of options, but I just wanted to confirm that if you just had a dollar number at this point, that that would be adequate in terms of building the budget?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And your first question brought to mind something else for the Small Grants And your first question brought to mind something else for the Small Grants Committee. Can you remember what our ethics law says about who would kind of, how they might fall under the various ethics rules, and also in terms of whether any of our groups like that are required to fill out these forms that I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, and for things like, if they're, if they're making recommendations on money, that could be crucial.
Yes. They, all appointed, everyone appointed by the council will need to fill out the gift disclosure form and the conflict of interest form. They, they only need to fill out the conflict of interest form if they feel, if it comes up. But, but that will be provided to everyone.
But they don't need to fill out the full ethics disclosure form in terms of financials?
No, only the council.
Okay. That's what our law is.
Yes.
Okay.
And just, can I do a follow-up on that?
Yeah.
And related to lobbying, if, for example, a paid or unpaid staff member from an organization requesting a grant comes to, for council and encourages support for the proposal, does that create any triggers in terms of the lobbying portion of the law?
I, I don't know. I think we need to discuss this with the Ethics Commission.
Okay. I remember that coming up in the MML discussion last summer. Essentially, it's the lobbyist piece of the ethics law, so if, if someone who, who is a potential recipient of city funds comes and speaks before us advocating for those funds, does that create any disclosure requirements? And I just can't remember if there was a times, or I can't remember what the pieces of it were. So, I mean, imagine if you were a registered lobbyist, you know, that's sort of what you do.
But if we were to invite people to speak to us, does that make somebody who comes at our invitation to speak to us, that they, about something that they want us to do in terms of funding, does that take them out of the category of lobbyist?
Probably not.
It does at the federal level, but I don't know.
We'll explore this.
Thank you.
Yes.
Did you have additional questions?
Yes. We have on this list here tonight, one request for $40,000, and another one for almost $57,000. And I was wondering, what, if you can recall, so far in this large grant process, what have the, how do those numbers compare with the size of prior larger, pardon, the larger grants that we've given through the large grant program?
Probably the Crossroads Community Food Network has been a, I don't know if that large, but has been a larger recipient. Independence Day Committee is in the range that they've gotten before.
Yeah, no, I'm just talking about...
The large ones.
The, the large ones. Where I'm coming from is that, I guess right now, we don't, in our, we don't cap it. We don't say, these are limited to X dollars at the max.
No.
And so, there's no reason for them not to limit it. And I just wonder if we were to approve, say, this one for $57,000 in whole, if we aren't sort of creating a precedent, might be a good precedent, I don't know. I'm just, I'm just thinking that budgets, there's always a scarcity of funds, and if we prove large ones this year, then next year, we can bet our bottom dollar that we'll have larger requests.
We can have an extra large grant request process.
Jumbo.
You know, I do think that as you go through this, as your discussion, you may want to have a cap, or, or consider how you...
I think that's something we need to talk about.
Think that through.
Councilmember Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I will disclose that I do have a relationship with a couple of these groups that are on here, but since I'm not going to go into detail on any of the specific groups, I don't think it's pertinent to the discussion tonight. I would just like to say that I would feel comfortable with capping our grants at $150,000 this year, and...
The total amount.
The total amount, yes. And then, there's some of those that I could, could talk about specifically when we get to that point, but I think that would give us all an amount to shoot for as we think through each of these individual applications.
Do you have something else?
Yeah, I was just gonna, I think we're getting into the discussion now, is that correct?
Sure.
I would similarly support setting a cap of $150,000, which is, I think, approximately $20,000 more than, or 20%, excuse me, 20% more than we did previous year, which was itself, I think, a growth from the year prior to that. So, it seems like, we obviously have attracted more grants. In the future, I would much rather that before any grants are solicited in the process, that we set a cap at that point in time, so council, through some, you know, process early, imagine, you know, September, or October, or November, have just a short agenda item, and say, you know, it's our intent to keep the large grant pool the same, more or less than the previous year, and do it much earlier, so those expectations are set for the applicants as well beforehand. But we can deal with that, you know, next year.
But we just want to clarify, you're talking about, again, a total cap, not an individual item cap?
Correct. I'm talking about, and we, I know, sorry, because we were also talking about an individual cap, but I would, I would support Councilmember Stevens' idea.
And, and just a reminder that if I'm correct, that last year, the hundred thousand, hundred and, the hundred thousand? Last year?
Hundred and thirty, or somewhere around there.
Hundred, hundred and thirty, included the $30,000 for OTBA, which is not included in this group this year, so that what we're probably talking about is a total of a hundred and whatever it was last year, and if it was a hundred and fifty cap this year, it's more like 180, because that other 30 has, has to go into the budget. So just thinking, thinking in terms of apples and apples. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. My question I have for my colleagues is, if we do put a cap on this year's awards, wouldn't that put the people, the organizations that have put forth applications at a disadvantage because they didn't, we didn't say that there was going to be a cap? So everybody just thought that they could, you know, ask for the moon? And so, they have written their applications thinking that, you know, we would fund at least what is required to continue on with their programs?
If I, if I might respond to that?
Please.
I would say that when we asked people to apply, we didn't tell them that we were going to grant their, their best wish, and...
But we said we didn't, wouldn't.
That's true, but it was an application process, which implies that there's an acceptance or denial, or even a modification of the amount, a reduction of the amount. So, I feel comfortable with setting an overall cap, and then maybe turning some of these applications down, or maybe adjusting the amounts that they've applied for.
And how do we create a system that it's fair for all of them, because we're going to have to adjust the amounts? I mean, do we just shave off 50% off everybody?
I wouldn't recommend that, but that wouldn't be my choice. I think there, that we look at the applications and the merits of the application, decide which ones are going to best serve the community.
Okay.
Councilmember Grimes.
I have another question about one of the applicants, the Tacoma Park Folk Festival, in their application lists for FY13 this current year, funding from the city, if I'm reading this right, AHCMC, I assume that's the Arts and Humanities Commission, AHCMC of Montgomery County, dash, City of Tacoma Park, for $11,000. What is that money? Is that city money? Is it county money? Is it county money that runs through the city? In other words, this $10,000 might be new, but is it $10,000 in addition to $11,000 that they're expecting through the Arts and, you probably don't know?
I don't know, but I, last year, within this current year, they're, they're getting $7,000 this year. And I think last year, it was $5,000, the Folk Festival.
So, are we talking about $5,000, $7,000, whether it's $7,000 or $9,000 plus $10,000 here?
I'm not, I'm not...
I mean, I guess what I'm saying is that some of these numbers are deceptive. We've already observed that OTBA is off the books now. Some of these are half on, half off, it seems like, and I feel like I'm dealing with slightly incomplete information. A question about another one of them. We've had a discussion about seniors and those who care for them, which I very, very, very much support. I think it's needed in the community, but there really isn't, there really isn't an organization that's capable at this moment, or as of July 1st, of taking a city check and spending it. There could be by mid-year fiscal year, in other words, by the winter, or something like that. The acting city manager talked about creating some kind of position there in the budget, which I would support also. That would take it off the grant roster, in which case, are we, if we do a $150,000 cap, are we lowering that $150,000 cap? Are we sticking with it? And, you know, so what is the status, so far as you're concerned, of the senior support, or more general community services function?
I'm, I'm actually not sure yet. I, I am leaning towards a part-time position for two years, that's not an ongoing position at this time. So that's what I'm leaning towards putting in the budget, but I'm still waiting on some revenue numbers before I feel really comfortable about it.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And then the council would separately have an opportunity to review that, of course, as part of the budget review. That, that doesn't answer the question about whether this particular grant comes off the large grant funding request. I do want to see this programming, support it, whether, whatever the mechanism, I'll just stop with that. I think that's it for me for the moment.
Can I just ask real quick, how much would that part-time position cost?
I'm not sure yet.
More than $25,000 presumably. There's benefits attached to it, but...
Right. It's likely to be more than that. Off the top of my head, it's probably like $60,000.
$60,000 for a part-time position?
I don't know. It depends on what all is involved, because there may be some contract stuff with that.
It's not necessarily half-time, it's...
That's right. And so, as I said, it's something I'm still researching.
All right, thank you.
I have lights from Councilmember Schultz and Councilmember Mail, and then I want to make sure that we kind of go through this list, and take, take a minute to talk about each of them, and then, and then as we come out the end of that, then we might know whether we have certain priorities, whether we want to set amounts, you know, exactly how we want to go forward with giving the direction to the city manager for the budget. Councilmember Schultz.
With the Community Development Block Grant funding, the federal government imposes upon us a limit of three years where money can be, consecutive years, granted to an applicant under four Community Development Block Grant. And I'm wondering, just in terms of process, if that might not be a, another thing we could take under consideration? Because I'm concerned that if we give to any one particular organizations, organization three years running, without some sort of rule in there, folks might get an erroneous impression that it's the city council's purpose to keep this funding going onward, whether that be true or not. And I'm concerned about raising expect, or, you know, false expectations by organizations that need the money, and then begin to think, well, gosh, we've gotten this money from the council, we can't not, we can't not get this money again, and if we, and so they're starting to become dependent on the city. Maybe for the Tacoma Park Independence Day Parade, which has been around for 100 years, that's where they, could be like the OTBA we were talking about. Otherwise, I, I just sort of think that we ought to think about that as one of our possible policies, that we may want to adopt going forward with the large grant program.
Councilmember Ray.
Thank you, and I think my comment is somewhat similar to Councilmember Schultz, and that I, you know, one of the criteria that I think about in reviewing these is, you know, whether this is sort of a startup effort, a startup effort that I think, I think has some chance of success, or that I've heard from constituents or people involved in the project that think it has some chance of success. And to me, the, the grants that are more sustained funding, they really almost deserve a separate conversation about, not about the grants per se, but about the types of policy priorities, the types of program priorities, that are most appropriate for non, for, for partners, like these grantees are, and that really sort of fulfill a need in the community, and sort of identifying lines of, of funding. And I think there are some in here that sort of deserve that consideration, and that I would consider as organizations or activities that we potentially want to create, the expectation of sustained funding, not necessarily to the same organization, but sustained funding for a, a, a program activity in future years. But for me, and I think I'm getting toward what the mayor indicated an interest in, which is discussion of the individual grants, for me, some of these projects really are, you know, wonderful startup activities that fill a need in the community, and those, to me, sort of, in some ways rise to the, rise to the top. Thank you.
Councilmember Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to follow on with Councilmember Mail's discussion, and I think that I support the idea, there are some of these organizations that are kind of different than, than other ones, and that we have the startups, and then we have the sustained activities. And, and if I understood you correctly, or maybe it wasn't what you were suggesting, is that the sustained activities would then be rolled into the budget in much the same way as OTBA is this year. So we would be talking about the grants for those, you know, where we're really trying to assist the new organizations or existing organizations with new, new projects.
Could I just add one detail? I'm not necessarily certain that I, that I'm ready for us to do that this year, but moving in the future.
I agree with you. Probably not this year. And then I would just like to say, as we're getting ready to go into the details of the projects, that I'm going to recuse myself from the discussion, because I am involved in several of these organizations, and even to stay for the discussion of those other organizations I'm not involved with, I think taints the discussion. So, I will wait in the other room for your recall. Thank you.
I don't think, I don't think it's necessary. We're not voting tonight. That's what he wishes to do.
I think there's reason. And I'll also let folks know that Councilmember Daniels-Cohen has signed off. She will review the rest of the meeting tomorrow, but she was ready. So, if we want to go down the list, and then, I would, I would anticipate that we could talk about any additional questions, or merits, or proposals that we want to make about these particular groups, get to the end, and then kind of see if we have a, what, the extent of the direction that we want to provide to the acting city manager for preparation of the budget. So, first one, we might as well go in alphabetical order, is the cheer proposal for $25,000. Questions, comments, proposals? Anybody feel like they've got all the information they need? We could, you know, in the end, we could do straw votes, or whatever it is that we want to do, but I want to get through each one and make sure that we've got whatever we need for them first. Councilmember Schultz.
Given that we're trying to help cheer cope with the loss of the heads, the HEZ application funding, with $20,000 out of the current fiscal year, and the reasonable expectation that they're going to be getting state funds outside of the HEZ funding process, at least based on my conversation with Bruce Baker, it seems reasonable that this $25,000 request, or something proximate to it, should be part of our proposed budget for the... proximate to it should be part of our proposed budget for FY14, simply to make sure that it's able to transition through into the fiscal year without any shortage of funds until it can garner the funds that it needs to get and hopes to get and has a reasonable expectation of getting from the state of Maryland. If it gets those kind of funding, then we won't probably be needing to hear from them again for the following fiscal years. So I would be interested in supporting this grant.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. I would like to concur with my colleague, Councilmember Schultz. I think Cheer is at a point where we, the city, needs to support their work with the Health Enterprise Zone, even though they did not get the first round. Bruce Baker is working diligently for other sources for funding. Our community has the largest amount of diabetics in Montgomery County. The work that Cheer would do would help us reduce that number and bring it in line with the rest of the county. So I would join my colleague and support the $25,000 request from Cheer. Thank you.
Do we have a clear sense, I guess it wasn't clear in my mind, the timing on their potential funding from other sources? Where I thought you were going to go, Councilmember Schultz, when you were talking, was to say you thought that given the $20,000, that maybe the $25,000 wasn't needed. When you went a different direction, I thought, well, maybe you were going to say that we could think of it as kind of provisional, depending on what the, what other outcomes are, and kind of put it in there as a provisional piece and see if we know more in two months as we get to the budget that way.
Yeah, I think if Bruce Baker were here, he'd probably say, would say that he doesn't know whether or not the, when the state funding would become available, and if therefore this $25,000 could be made provisional. But I certainly don't know that question. So I think we sort of need to put it in here, and maybe before we formally adopt the budget, we'll have better information from Bruce.
Thanks. Councilmember Grimes.
I find it difficult to evaluate these one by one, because while I heard at least two councilmembers talk about placing a $150,000 ceiling, in other words, we're not looking at them individually if we're thinking that way. And I do think that the total request of $222,000 is a lot in light of what we funded last year. So I'm going to say that I've gone down the list, and all of the smaller grants, meaning $15,000 or below, with the exception of the Bicycleist Association, I would fund in full. And the Bicycleist Association, I, I'm a little puzzled why they wouldn't be charging for the courses that they would be giving, at least something. So I would cut that. And I would cut each of the other ones in rough proportion to its size, understanding that each of these is a worthy program, which is why I would preserve money in each of them. However, I would find it difficult to cut one rather than the other. So for Cheer, I'm going to go down my whole list, sorry, I would cut that to $20,000, and I would make at least a portion of that provisional, as we just discussed. Crossroads, I would cut by $10,000 to $30,000. Dance Exchange, I would actually cut by $10,000 to $5,000, because I know that in their application, they are getting $5,000 from Montgomery County, $5,000 from the state of Maryland, and $5,000 from the Cafferts Foundation. And if the state of Maryland's giving them $5,000 in the county, which are both much larger budgets than ours, I don't see why we would want to give them more. So I would cut that one to $5,000. Enterprise Development Group, in proportion there, I would cut by $5,000. Educare, I would cut by $15,000, given the size. It's not that it's not a worthy program. And there you go, that would realize cuts in excess of $50,000 from the total here. The one I haven't mentioned is seniors and those who care for them. Again, that is one of my highest priorities here, but I would, I guess we're going to see that as part of the regular budget process. So on Cheer in particular, I would cut that to $20,000, and then I would favor making that provisional, where we would look to see what success Bruce Baker has had in other fundraising. And again, it's a matter of funding, to the extent possible, the very, the number of worthy programs in front of us.
Councilmember Mail.
Thank you, and thank you, Councilmember Grimes, for that, going through that. I just think that's a good way to think about the projects. You know, for me, I support, again, the $150,000 cap and taking that approach to the budget. I think what I'd almost prefer is after this discussion, for us each as individuals, I don't think this violates any process, to go out and figure out how we would each get to $150,000, put that in the public record for some subsequent meeting, and then be able to discuss, argue, agree on the various different ways that we found to come up with, you know, $150,000 of spending that we thought met the community's priorities. That would be one way to get through it in a, maybe a more efficient manner. But I think this discussion is important. For me, on the Cheer proposal, is the, is the idea of the zone being created, Councilmember Schultz, you talked about this phase or this tier, is there a chance for the, for an area to be designated next year or in some future state cycle?
The Cheer?
Yeah, and the Cheer proposal...
For the HEZ?
The HEZ.
I don't know. Whether the state of Maryland's going to repeat the application process.
Or if it's just done.
Right.
My understanding was that there were 17 applications total. The state approved five, and then contingently has five more, of which Cheer is not one. So they're not up next, so far as I know, for a grant if money becomes available.
So thank you for that, those details. For me, in terms of this proposal, I do note that they talk about essentially supporting a number of health circles, 12 is what's in the proposal. And to me, that sounds like an activity that could be scaled. So you could do six, you could do three, you could do nine, or you could do 12. And so for that reason, again, I'd rather discuss these as a group, but this is an area where I could see providing a lower level than requested and try, but trying to make it something that they can do something with. Thank you.
And if it would be more helpful to people, we could, we could discuss them a group, as a group, I would just like to make sure first that there isn't a reason to discuss one in particular, but we can go to the group if that works for people.
I'd rather talk about some individual ones that I'm concerned about.
Go ahead.
Thank you. The next one on the list is the Crossroads Community Food Network, and I think I sent around a, I read this one very carefully, it's an elaborate application, and I sent some comments to my colleagues here, because I had some serious troubles with it, and several of them, the most prominent one, I guess, is my concern is that, is that the application, which is trying to provide quality foods to low-income residents in the service area of the Crossroads Community Food Network, there is no information provided within the application of how the applicant would determine whether the recipients of these, of the food grants or the programs' benefits would be Tacoma Park residents or not. And there, in the justification or the rationale for the program, no attempt is made by the applicant to describe the Tacoma Park population. They use generalities of the limitations that certain ethnic groups in the United States as a whole have, and then reply those percentages to the city of Tacoma Park. So from going from a sample of 340 million people to 17,000 seems like quite a, quite an assumption. And I, so I'm concerned, because I'm very familiar with the farmers market and have been a strong supporter for the Crossroads Farmers Market, but the vast majority of the users of that market come from outside the city of Tacoma Park. And not that any of us, I'm sure, want to be mean or stingy about providing these, you know, health benefits of healthy food to anybody that needs them, but the simple fact is, is that this is taxpayers' money that we're using here, and we need to think in terms of how we're going to benefit the taxpayers of the city of Tacoma Park, because, you know, we're just, we have our boundaries. And so I would, would want to try to help the Crossroads Community Food Network with some kind of money this year, but I really don't know how to judge it until they're able to come up with some data to support, rather than just anecdotal data like we heard tonight, that there's a big need because we have a lot of Latinos in the city who need access to food. There's no question that that's the case, but we just don't know how those people would be helped, as I've said. So that's one I have questions about. So I can't say that I would say, oh, we should just lop it down to 30,000, or we should lop it down to 20, or something else. I'd rather take a more intelligent approach than just sort of coming out with a lopping shears or something like that. That's all I wanted to say on that one. If anybody else has any comments.
I wonder if Ms. Gergens, who's here from Crossroads, could maybe address your question.
I'd be very happy to, if you have the time. Can you hear me if I don't...
No, you need to come up here, and if you can just kind of give us something in like two minutes.
Could I just say one proposal before you start speaking?
Yes.
Would it make sense that if anybody else has questions, get all the questions out? Or do you want to do one of the, because I think I'm going to have questions too.
About Crossroads?
About Crossroads.
Sure, let's, let's get, make sure that there's all the questions.
So if you just stand in front row, then we're there, then we can go through them all and then...
Oh, I'm sorry. Wait.
Yeah.
You're saying just hold off?
Sure.
Is that all right?
Anybody else have questions besides Councilmember Mail? We'll go to him, and then we can hear from you.
Great, sorry, so I'm the only other one with questions. I'm, I have the same sort of concern nagging at me as Councilmember Schultz. You know, one way I was thinking about it is you have the, there's the program that the organization, the Crossroads, is doing in three elementary schools, so you could look at allocating money to particular program activities, and that's the way I was thinking about it in terms of trying to figure out a budget amount, and then, you know, and this is related to the question, back to you, and I think a process, you know, sort of what I would be interested in seeing is a couple of sort of amendments or additional texts that might, we might get associated with this application, that would just talk about how for the various three or four program activities in the proposal, how each of those, you know, the sort of costs associated with each of those. I also noted in here, and I'm curious, as a question for you, there's a piece about microenterprises and commercial kitchens, and that obviously relates to another grant proposal that we have in front of us, and the question of timing. So if the commercial kitchen at the Presbyterian Church is not ready for some period of time, is there, therefore, is there not an immediate need for the educational work and the advocacy and the training that you would provide at this point, or conversely, is there a need right now? Those are my questions. Thank you.
Let me start with a question about who we actually serve, and I'm really sorry that I didn't know in advance of this meeting that you had questions about it, because we do keep zip code data on everyone who participates in the Fresh Checks program at the farmers market, and our school programming serves three schools, two of which are exclusively Tacoma Park children, and one of which is Roland Terrace, which has some city children and some not city children. But I believe that, and I'm sorry, I didn't bring my, my records, but I believe that 40% of the Fresh Checks are used by Tacoma Park residents every summer, but as I say, we track all of that money by zip code. So the other piece of the programming is the SNAP outreach, and the bulk of that work is done at 7676 New Hampshire Avenue, working with seniors at the Franklin Center, working with moms at the elementary schools. But I can certainly give you a breakdown that shows the extent to which the $300,000 of programming that we're able to bring into the city benefit city residents.
That would be very helpful.
I'm sorry?
I said that would be very helpful.
I'd be very happy to get that out to you by the end of this week. And I can also do a budget that shows a more thorough breakdown of which pieces of, of our staffing go to which of the lines of programming. Is that what you're asking for, Congressman, I mean, Councilman? I can do both of those things, and I'd be happy to. We have done a lot of reporting over the years because of previous grants that we've received, so it really spells out a lot of the detail about the demographics in the city and about who the services go to. And so we did not include as much of that in the background for this grant application, but we certainly can provide it.
Okay.
Thanks. Thanks, that would be very helpful.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
And then just, there was that one other question about the commercial kitchen and the...
Oh, well, we're partnering, we've been partnering on the commercial kitchen project with the Presbyterian Church, and I'm not primarily the program person, so I can't tell you, I don't know whether anyone's here from the church who can speak about that. We, that's very much in the pilot stage. So some piece of what we do is pretty well established in this sort of a, I mean, I was very interested in your discussion about process, because one of the questions that we had asked before we submitted this application was about grant size and what kind of grants, what size of grant applications you were anticipating. And at this point, your process doesn't really advise groups like ours about what you have in mind, but it does, so we came at it really from the point of view that this is an opportunity for the council to invest city funds in the kind of city that you really feel it ought to be for all of its citizens, and we asked for what we felt we needed to keep the programs robust and keep the work going on.
Councilmember Grimes.
I've been working very regularly with the Community Commercial Kitchen Initiative and have some insider understanding of the relationships. Crossroads participates in the planning efforts, has participated in the application for external funding from other governmental entities, but none of, none of the city money for the commercial kitchen would go to Crossroads, and none of the Crossroads money would go to the commercial kitchen effort. Rather, Crossroads and its community are potential patrons, users of the commercial kitchen. For instance, just this last weekend and the weekend before, the commercial kitchen did some Spanish-language food service certification training, and a number of the ladies there who participated were recruited through Crossroads. It's anticipated that the Crossroads Farmers Market, which is operated by the Crossroads Community Food Network, would, the farmer participants would provide food that would be processed in the commercial kitchen, that the farmers market would serve as a outlet for small businesses that are created and essentially incubated out of that commercial kitchen. So it's a, it's a very close collaborative relationship that's envisioned, but there's not a financial, a direct financial relationship in the sense of money going from one entity to the other.
Okay.
Were there any more questions?
I don't think so.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, we've had discussion about the first two. I want to move along to Dance Exchange and see if there's anything anybody else says about Dance Exchange. Councilmember Smith?
I just wanted to do an overview. If you want to go to Dance Exchange, that's fine. I don't have any comments on Dance Exchange.
Okay. I've, I've got one on Dance Exchange. My thought when I saw this was that they're proposing to bring workshops, to bring involvement of all of the segments of our community, and I thought about what I know about what they have spent decades doing in other communities around the world, working with people in those places. communities around the world, working with people in those places, and kind of bringing out, in many ways, what can be special in those communities. And I've always found it interesting that they didn't have that connection necessarily with their home city. And so, having an opportunity to have that connection with Tacoma Park, I thought, would be really interesting and valuable. And I know that they have a long history of working with community. And as I, as I've thought about all of these grant applications, I tended to kind of look at them with a lens of which ones were going to build community and which ones were about, in some ways, not as much that. And so, when I thought about my priorities, the community-building lens was kind of foremost for me. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. I'd like to talk about the programs that I'd like to support.
Okay, if I can interrupt for a second. Councilmember May has something in particular on that one.
I wanted to talk about the Dance Exchange one, so if you can.
Go ahead.
Thank you. You know, we just, we made a grant last year to the Dance Exchange, I believe. And I remember the discussion, and in the discussion, we talked a lot about an organization that was trying to expand program locally for the first time. We had conversations about whether, you know, would this be a request we would see year after year? And for me personally, and constituents, I have, I've never seen any feedback on last year's grant, and I've never received any feedback from any constituents about the services that grant provides, positive or negative, right? So, it's just no feedback. And when I think about the set of grants here, this would be the one that I would be least likely to fund, along with the Bicycle Association proposal. So, if I were thinking about how to allocate my funds, these are the two places where I would be least likely to put money. And let me just add a caveat to that, which is that if the city has received, you know, wonderful grant reports about the activities in the previous grant, the use of the money, then I'd happily look at that and, since we're not making decisions tonight, think about it and think about evaluating my remarks. Thank you.
How much did we give to Dance Exchange last year?
Five thousand.
Five thousand.
And remind me, we have reports from grant recipients for that, or they're still potentially coming in?
This program works differently than the small grant program, but I think I do have something, we do have something from the Dance Exchange, which I can share with you.
Sounds like that would be a good idea to get that information as well. Okay, now, Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. The programs that I would like to see supported, Cheer, and I'd like to see them funded for the entire $25,000. I think it would be okay if some of that money was on a provisional basis. My conversations with Bruce Baker, he's looking at a different route than the HGZ funding, but it would come from the state and other sources. But it's not the same process as he went through before. I would like to see us fund for the full amount the Enterprise Development Group. I think any way we can foster small business in the community, and I think the work that the Enterprise Development Group is doing just that. I would love to see EduCare Support Services receive full funding. Anytime we can feed people in our community that need help, I think the state should step up. I don't know about seniors and those who care for them. I would like to see some type of funding for them, but I don't know if it should be a part-time person or if we should fund this request. But there's, something needs to be done for seniors and those who care for them, some type of funds for the program. Because all people should age with dignity. Tacoma Park Festival, I'm uncertain about that. I don't know if that should be a, since that activity occurs every year, I don't know if that should be a regular just allotment from the city like the Tacoma Business Association. And if it isn't, why should we fund Tacoma and not the Tacoma Park Folk Festival? Tacoma Park Independence Day Committee, I think that is a no-brainer. We should make that just a regular funding source from the city. I mean, we're going to have Independence Day celebrations, so why not just give them the money so they don't have to go through the process? But they should come back to the council with some type of report that lets us know what they did, how many people participated in the activities. I think that would be very helpful. I'm uncertain about the commercial kitchen. I don't know if it, I'm thinking about this, I don't know if it's right for the state to fund religious activity, or not religious activity, but an activity at a religious institution. I don't know if that is...
EduCare is located in a religious institution?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry you interrupted me.
EduCare is moving.
Their, they, their budget includes $400 a month for 12 months to pay the Methodist Church. I don't have an objection to that, by the way. And I'm sorry I interrupted you.
But EduCare is looking for a retail location. And I wouldn't fund the Washington Area Bicycleists Association. Thank you.
Let me just, at this point, take a quick run-through on these to see if I'm capturing what appears to be an evolving consensus, that there's interest in providing funding for Cheer, there's potential interest in providing some level of funding for the Crossroads Community Food Network. There appears to be not too much interest in providing funding for the Dance Exchange, but we're going to get additional information. ECDC, I, okay, we'll, I'll hold off characterizing that one. A sense that some level of funding for EduCare, still trying to figure out seniors and those who care for them, probably the, whatever the, what is that, $2,115 for the CBA probably is something that people are going to say, yes, make sure that that's in there. The Folk Festival, whether it's through this process or moving to the other part of the budget, is probably a yes. The Independence Day Committee, the same thing. I sense that there's interest in the commercial kitchen and that there is not much interest in WABA's proposal.
Did you just skip the Crossroads development?
No, he said some level of support.
Oh, sorry, I didn't catch that.
So, just, if that sounds like a fair characterization of people, to people, we can continue the conversation, but that sounds like where things are going. Councilmember Schultz?
Yeah, I think that sounds like a fair characterization of where we're going. I did want to talk about the ECDC Enterprise Development Group, because I, I am a member of the Board of Directors of that 501(c)(3) and was instrumental in helping it locate an office here in Tacoma Park. So, obviously, I have a bias, but unlike my colleague, Councilmember Seaman, I don't want to abstain myself from this discussion in general, simply because of my affiliation with one of these organizations. I did have a conversation with the director of that program a few weeks ago before he submitted it, well, I don't remember now exactly when, and asked him if it was a scalable project. In other words, if the budget needed to be reduced, as it would likely be the case, since there wasn't going to be enough money to fund all of these, was, could it be scaled back and still be functional? And he said, "Yes." So, that's all I want to say on that subject.
Other comments? Councilmember Mail?
On the Folk Festival and the Independence Day Committee, I guess a question I have there is just sort of what's the right level of funding? I don't really know the answer to that question, and I also don't know whether, for either of those organizations, the idea of essentially a matching challenge could be helpful. So, if we awarded a base level with cap and, you know, created some sort of match, if that's at all helpful in the other fundraising they do, the Folk Festival, I think the total budget is $140,000 or $150,000. To clearly matching this level of support would be doable. I just don't know if it's a helpful thing to do. With the ECDC Enterprise Development Group, and I apologize because I just don't necessarily understand the nuance of exactly what they would do, but I don't, I don't quite understand exactly how that relates to the functions that the city already provides. You know, where, where there's a synergy, where there could be overlap in services. So, that's really just a question. You know, the EduCare Support Services, I support the project. I don't know if I would support full funding, but I would like to try. But it's an interesting pair with the Crossroads Community Food Network efforts. You know, one is, I think, trying to feed as many families and as many people in need as possible. The other is trying to do, provide food services, but also quality food services, which is the whole SNAP, Fresh Checks matching thing, you're essentially doubling the value of food assistance otherwise provided. And those two projects sort of go hand in hand. If we were going to award funding to both of them, I'd almost want to ask them to spend some time together, to try to learn from each other, to try to coordinate. And that may already be happening, but I'd almost like to make that part of a, of a grant project. I fully support the effort in the Presbyterian Church to get the kitchen up and running. We've heard about that in, maybe beginning nine months ago, or it could have been even longer, and efforts at the county level to facilitate that effort. And, you know, I'm really interested in seeing it take off. It's the sort of project where I want it, I would want it to take off, I would want it to get funding for a period of time and then fledge from city support, and I have the expectation that it would be able to do so. And like, like what I've seen, what I believe I've seen with Crossroads, which is an organization this, previous councils, and then their wisdom, supported, you know, for a number of years, that's an organization that, that you started as really getting their feet under them, and now they've, they've got, they're expanding capacity, and what we're funding are new program areas that become national models, that become regional models for how to be effective. Those, that's a fantastic success. It's a tribute to the organization, it's a tribute to the city as being an early investor in something that's really a wonderful project. So, that's the way I see the, the commercial kitchen effort, is getting that up and going and then, you know, thriving, the expectation of seeing it thriving. And I think, I think that sort of covers my, that covers all the projects. Thank you.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you. Just a remark about EduCare. My recollection from when I visited there was that the director talked about acquiring fresh foods for distribution from the Crossroads Farmers Market. These institutions are obviously all interlinked in some way, and they're aware of one another and want to see that kind of collaboration. I know, not from my own work, but when I've talked to people who do economic, international economic development, that it's far preferable, for instance, to buy food and supplies where they're needed through local market mechanisms than to fly it in on pallets and cargo planes from the United States. So, the people at EduCare are very aware of the desirability of providing fresh foods, and they're aware of the sources of fresh foods locally. So, these things are interlinked, and I find that pretty impressive, that that's happened without any prompting from us.
I'll take another stab at a wrap-up of, I think, where we are at this point, in the hopes that we might have something that we're sufficiently comfortable with to provide the city manager with a direction for the budget. And it sounds like, I haven't heard much argument against a cap of 150,000, an overall cap. And I would say that it sounds like we're, we're getting close on that with some questions in terms of the types of potential awards for the different groups. If it was along the lines of something like 20,000 for Cheer, 30,000 for the Food Network, zero for the Dance Exchange, I'm not sure what for ECDC, if I just said 15 as a round number, and 40,000 for EduCare. Seniors who care for them is kind of the wild card, not sure how we're going to deal with that.
I think I'd like to handle it in the budget in some way, and just not have it part of this list. I mean, it would just, I think I might as well just say that so that you can work around, you know, not include that in this list for your purposes.
Okay. The 2,115 for Crossroads Authority, 10,000 for the Folk Festival, 15,000 for Independence Day, 10,000 for the commercial kitchen, and zero for WABA. I think we're just kind of there. And if, and if we say those are, those are guidelines, but of course, when we do the budget, we, we come up with the final piece, and with the 150,000 cap, it sounds like we've done what we need to do for the budget. Is there any sense that that doesn't capture it?
I do have a question.
Councilmember Grimes?
It seems that we are entertaining, or will soon be entertaining, our request from Manop. What's the status there?
I think it may be, I haven't seen a dollar figure. When I originally spoke to them a couple of weeks ago, it was in the context of, gee, if the council is considering increasing library hours to Sunday, you know, and you're saying you need things and things aren't available to you, you know, is that going to be something that speaks to the needs that you have? And they said, "No." And so, it was like, "Well, what is it that you would need?" And it sounds like the request tonight was some additional funds to enable them to expand and have a larger group, but I don't know what that is and whether it would be in the small grants, whether it would be in the large grants, whether it would be within the recreation department budget. I don't know.
Yeah, I was just wondering about rec budget also, and I don't know where we are with the fiscal year '13 rec spending and all of that. I'm, you know, I think that, I'm guessing that there's a desire on all of our parts to support them in, in some way. And my impression is that it wouldn't necessarily require a whole lot of money. They didn't, I don't have the impression they're talking about paying staff, for instance, which would be a major cost, rather, this is money that would support programs. So, I guess we're just not addressing that right now, but I wanted to make sure it wasn't something that was going to be added to this.
My, I think you're right. My sense is that we, that we would want to do something, and we're looking for the best avenue to do it. And so, if there's something that the city manager can provide after talking with the recreation director...
I'll check and see what the director's discussions would be with, with the program and see what that comes out. For the numbers, Bruce, that you mentioned for these different programs, it's 142,015 if you don't count the seniors component.
Right. And, and we set a cap of 150, it doesn't mean we have to get to 150.
No.
But we can make that final decision within the, within the budget discussion, but it sounds like putting pieces in there.
Well, what, I mean, do you want me to just to put 150? I mean, I don't need to identify these as part of my discussion.
Sounds like that's comfortable.
Yeah.
So, I'll just put the 150, but you've, you're pretty close and you can...
Right.
As you go.
Councilmember Schultz and then Councilmember Grimes.
I guess, going back to the process that we started, overall process, I think we're learning that as the large grant process has matured over the, what, four years, four budget years or five, that it's giving a little, the requests are getting more numerous, larger, and more diverse. And some of the applicants seem to be getting better at, in preparing their applications, which is another way of saying a bit more sophisticated. So, I think it really behooves us to come up with a better process for evaluating. For example, the, the applications came in and were distributed to us... For example, the applications came in and were distributed to us, I don't know when that was. I remember looking over most of them, and by the time we get a chance here to talk about them, some of us are familiar with some of them, others of us are not at all familiar with them. And I'd like us to summarize others, see if we can't build in an early feedback loop after these applications come in to the city council members and maybe to the committee to provide them a reaction, so that if we have concerns about an application, or as currently we do on some of these, then the applicant has a chance to kind of add to or amend, clarify their application. I think that would facilitate the decision-making process, and be fairer to the applicants, rather than making it just an all-or-one-shot kind of an application. Those are just some thoughts that I'd like to throw out right now. I know this is not something we're going to focus or finish tonight, but that's just where my thinking is. Thank you.
Councilmember Grimes.
I also have certain suggestions of process-related. One is that maybe for the future cycles, we can anticipate certain types of questions. For instance, the ones asked tonight about whether the people served are actually Tacoma Park residents, and what mechanisms there are to ensure that the city money goes to Tacoma Park residents, and so on and so forth. The one that we asked about here isn't the only one. There are questions about, for instance, looking at the EduCare application, they talk about the estimated that the population in Tacoma Park is about 40,332. Well, do we really understand where Tacoma Park is here? And I'm not really concerned, however, I'll say, if they needed people who don't live in the city, which isn't to say that we shouldn't try to target as well as we can. And then, secondly, since the size of the grant applications is creeping up, I would like to see certain financial reporting required by the grant applications as part of their grants, for instance, if they're 501(c)(3)'s, to provide their latest IRS 990 form, which may not be available through sites like GuideStar yet, they should provide it to us or equivalent financial reporting. And then also, for the larger grants, we may choose to disperse the money in stages, two or four stages during the year, based on their reading, reaching certain milestones, just as a, just as a control mechanism here. So I'd be happy to be involved in discussions of what these different mechanisms should be, what should go into the application, and so on. But I'll just stop here now with saying that I could see a need for these things.
Sounds like we're all ready for a discussion to come back and fine-tune the process.
And that could involve the Small Grants Committee or other people in the community to work on the process as well.
Okay. And I'll just double-check one final time, you have what you need for the budget. Okay. Thank you all. And we'll also get additional information that we requested on these, so that we have more when we get back to it in the budget. We will go to our final item, which is a discussion of the proposed charter amendment resolution on elections. Does the clerk want to shepherd this discussion?
Yes, I would like to. Let me start out by saying, the reason this is coming back to you one more time was, is before the final drafting, is because in reviewing it and working on the initial drafting, and Tim had done some work, and Seth had done some work, and I did some work, and I sort of combined everything together, and a number of questions came up as I was looking at this, and I wanted to give the council a chance to make some preliminary decisions about how it wants to go, because it wasn't totally clear for me how the majority wanted to go on each of these things at the last time this was discussed. And so what I did was prepared, I'm going to assume, I think, that all of you have looked through the items. Can I assume that, that you've all read through the changes? And I do apologize.
You must assume that.
I discovered today that what was online did not show, if any of you looked at it only online, it did not show the additions and deletions from the charter, and I do apologize for that. It's now correct online. So in your paper copy, it shows areas of change in the charter itself. And so I don't know if you'd like me to walk through these questions, or if you want to just take them one at a time, Mayor, and go through it. I'd be happy to provide any information about my thinking in raising these questions for you to look at.
My feeling is, you've put it together, why don't you walk us through it?
Yeah, and just to kind of clarify, the purpose here is so we can give direction to the city attorney's staff in actually drafting the charter amendment.
Correct. Correct. So, actually, let me rip this apart so I can look at two things at once. So just taking things in order by sections of the charter, you'll note that Section 302 talks about qualifications and salary of the mayor, and then further on down, 304 talks about qualifications and salary of the council members. And I wanted to pose the question that, and you don't have to answer this now, but if the council chooses to lower the voting age, does that mean you want to lower the age of people who could be elected, who would be eligible to run for council and mayor? Because right now, if you're a qualified voter, that's one of the criteria, and there's no age limit in the charter itself, except that you must be a qualified voter of the city. So that is certainly something that you'll want to think about, as to whether you want to now, let's assume you want to lower the voting age, do you now want to set a minimum age for mayor and council? So it's something to think about.
And do you want?
Do you want to respond to that now, or should I just keep going through?
I think if we have general comments, we ought to make them now, just in case that might provide some direction. Do you have something on that, Councilmember Maye?
I do, and I guess, when I started thinking about this, one, I thought about the fact that we have non-citizen voting, and we have never chosen to exclude non-citizens from running for office. I don't know if that debate came up during the period when it was initially drafted, but to my mind, I guess, I, on the one hand, I don't know if I'm really for or against 17-year-olds or 16-year-olds running for office. I don't know whether at the state level, 17-year-old can run for office if they will be 18 at the time of the election in which they would have run. I don't know how the state has resolved those issues. But I guess I tend to think that I would rather just trust the voters and assume that voters are going to choose candidates who are qualified to represent them. And, you know, there are going to be.
Have to see when they have.
You know, I mean, you know, yes, there, I'm sure there in the city's history have been people who have run, who the voters decided didn't deserve to serve, and I trust that process to work itself out. So, you know, my preference would be to do this as simply as possible, and to not, not make groups of otherwise eligible voters ineligible to serve as representatives.
And the question that I had on this particular area was, if a 16- or 17-year-old were elected, could they sign obligations on behalf of themselves or of the city if potentially one were elected mayor? There are certain things that the mayor has to sign on behalf of the city that are legal documents, like the 410 MOU. And whether if they did sign that, could then somebody question the legality of that document, signed by a minor?
Or a non-citizen.
Right. You know, I think, to be honest, in reviewing the state, the state, I forget if it's the Constitution, or it may be possible, and I need to get a legal opinion on this, I think it's very possible that a non-citizen may not be able to hold office. And again, I'll get the exact opinion on that, but, so, let's, if there were no legal impediments to an underage person, if there were no legal impediments, do you have an opinion as to whether or not you would want to set a minimum age? Or maybe that's just a question to be resolved later.
Councilmember Grimes, do you have?
I see that the state of Maryland requires that a member of the House of Delegates be 21, and a member of the state senate be 25, and there are other limits, the governor and lieutenant governor must be 30, and so on, which isn't answering the question about 16- and 17-year-olds here in Tacoma Park, but it certainly would not be unprecedented to.
It does set a differential age from qualifications for voting.
Yeah.
Any other comments on this particular part of it? Councilmember Schultz.
I wish I didn't have to comment on this, but the idea of having children run for public office, I think goes over the top in terms of absurdity. I don't support the idea of children being able to vote. I think it's a nice thing to do, if they'd like to pretend vote, that'd be fine, be part of their citizens' civics class, notwithstanding the bright young people we had here tonight, who probably in some ways are probably more articulate about things than I am sometimes, but that doesn't persuade me. So therefore, the idea of having someone be eligible to run for office, who's a minor who cannot sign a contract legally in the state of Maryland, be able to be representing the citizens, that just, I mean, how can they sign an ethics form that they'd be required to sign unless they got their parents to sign it for them? Just, I mean, we're, I don't want to keep on going, because this is an Alice in Wonderland to me.
Am I making a mistake by going at it in this direction? Maybe, maybe it would be, make more sense to start off with, does the council want to address in this proposed charter amendment, do you want to put forward a charter amendment that would include lowering the voting age? And there are some options in lowering the voting age that I can present, but, so if there's no, if, for instance, if there isn't majority support for even going ahead with that, then we could just put it to rest. But if you, if there is a sense you'd like to have that.
I'm sorry, majority support for the?
For even, even.
We did the hand vote of six to one last meeting.
For this underage, for the young voters?
For 16, 17-year-old voting. We voted separately on both issues. One was a straw vote of seven to zero, one was a straw vote of six to one for early voting and, and up to day registration voting.
I didn't, I didn't get that sense.
Wait a minute, say what you just said again.
So we have these two issues, right? We've talked about them a couple of weeks ago.
Right.
And you, the mayor had asked whether we should take a sort of straw poll on this, on these issues. I think Councilmember Schultz said, let's, we vote on them separately, and we then did a straw poll on both issues, and one was an outcome of six to one in support of moving forward, and the other was seven to zero in support of moving forward.
Yeah.
But for, say, which?
Not for running for office, that was a separate issue.
Say what the straw poll votes were.
The straw poll votes were.
Were the issues.
Six to one for the issue of lowering the voting age to 16, and seven to zero for day of election registration.
Okay. Well, given that.
As I recall, it was about whether to get more information about it, not.
Right, whether to go to drafting.
Right.
And I guess, in a way, I'm asking that same question again, whether to continue with drafting, and if it's a yes, continue with drafting on both of these, then let's continue through the charter sections.
And I think the flip side of that is, obviously, you know, do, if people are opposed to the idea, it would be ridiculous to spend staff time on drafting potential legislation.
That, right, right.
So should that go?
So.
For vote?
So just.
My sense is, we could now say, are people still interested in continuing to draft language to reduce the voting age, so that 16- and 17-year-olds can vote? Then we can continue with this, assuming the answer is yes. Councilmember Grimes.
Can I say that there's a middle possibility, which is to allow 17-year-olds to vote, and possibly a few people who are 16-plus, 358 days, just as the state allows 17-year-olds who will be 18 by the day of the next general election to vote in the primary, so that's typically going to be like, what, six months in advance? Well, we could allow people who will be 18 by the next even-year general election to vote in the municipal election that precedes it, and that would cover all 17-year-olds. So what I'm saying is there's a middle ground here, that we would be, if we chose that middle ground, we would be essentially extending the state's provision that allows 17-year-olds to vote in a primary, so long as they'll be 18 by the next general election.
Why would we move to a middle ground before we even identified what we need to move to a middle ground?
I'm stating that it's not 16- and 17-year-olds or not, I'm stating that it's 16- or 17-year-olds, or 17-year-olds, or none.
Right. Right, it's true, there's not a, right.
And then there's 14-year-olds, and 13-year-olds, and 12-year-olds, and 12-year-old, legal residents, and 12-year-old.
But that was never on the table, just that 16-year-olds was the, what was, in the original proposal.
Maybe we should consider disenfranchising, no, I won't finish that sentence.
Okay. A straw vote on continuing to draft language for a charter amendment, so that we can have a public hearing for 16- and 17-year-olds.
Or reducing the voting age.
Reducing the voting age, so that 16- and 17-year-olds can vote. Let's just do 16- and 17. That's what was on the table, that's what we had said before. If there isn't support for that, then we can see if there's the middle crack. So all those in favor of continuing to draft for lowering the voting age?
Does it continue to move forward, because you would still have, once it's drafted, the council doesn't have to amend the charter, there'll still be a public hearing. I'm just saying, you know, it's, you could move ahead with it, or just kill it now? Just, that's.
Okay. So, hands in the air for continuing to draft.
I'm sorry, I have to, I mean, procedurally, how does this work? We have a straw vote, we inform the public of what we're going to do, and then, in an unrecorded vote, without a move resolution, we make changes? Like, I mean, this is, I don't understand this sort of process at all.
Right. Well, I understood after the last meeting to go ahead to continue drafting. So, so worked on the draft, need the city attorney to do final language, and I just thought it would be good to run through a lot of these things before we do the final language. And I guess the big questions hanging out there are the two big initiatives. It's the lowering the voting age, and it's the same-day voter registration. And it just seemed to me that we could, I can go through all the minutia of, do you want to go this way, or that way, or this way, or that way? But if you, if the council has no intention of lowering the voting age, why would we do it?
But, I mean, at what point do we, do we move to the clerk, asking whether, I mean, we didn't have a discussion, issues to propose, I mean, why does this, why is this the process that all of a sudden we're going with? I don't understand this at all.
I guess the question that we came here is just on some of these other kind of things. If we assume that the.
I understand what you guys are saying.
Is it, no.
But procedurally, I don't understand why we're treating this issue, a proposal that we put on the agenda before residents, in such a, to me, a very different way than we treat other issues.
Okay. Let me just see if I can ask my question, and if it's what you were thinking I was going to say. And that is that. And that is that if the direction is to write charter language for consideration as it was before, to have the lower voting age, then do we want, is there direction about mayor and council member age? There's a variety of questions about kind of dates of things. And how, I guess the question to the whole group is, you know, how should we proceed with those questions?
That's the purpose for this. It's just that, to go through these minutia. But it's just when I, I'm getting the sense that there wasn't support. I don't know if I should be talking about the age for the council and mayor.
How are you getting a sense that there wasn't support when we had, we had one council member speak, a second, we had two council members who commented.
Sorry, I just, yeah, maybe I'm misreading the council.
Councilmember Grimes.
I have to join Councilmember Mail and his, I should have been there all along, but in his protest. These resolutions are before the council because Councilmember Mail and I, working with members of the community, drafted them. When I, when we turned over our text to the city clerk, it was my understanding that it was to have the language corrected and so on. The normal procedure with a bill, I, I, this bill's not been introduced in the council. If you'd like, I will move it now. That would be improper, however. Move it as I drafted it, as Councilmember Mail drafted it in collaboration with members of the community. Then we can get public comment and all of that kind of stuff. We're making decisions about what should be included or not without having had a formal opportunity for public comment. The only public comment we've had is an informal opportunity in the public comment period. The process here for charter amendments includes public hearings. I think that we should have that public hearing that should include the language that, that Councilmember Mail and I have discussed with a variety of community members. And I, I do think it is improper for the council to strip that out at this point. I'll add that a part of our initiative was not to change the charter regarding who can run for mayor and council. And so my answer would be that we chose not to include that.
Okay.
And just to add to that, we've even included in the document packet for residents an indication of when there might be a public hearing, leading us to give them the expectation there would be a public hearing.
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting you don't.
Leading me to communicate to residents that they didn't need to come tonight, that the opportunity, the best opportunity to comment would be when that public hearing was held. I mean.
No, yeah, yeah. I, just let me, just let me go back a minute. My, my assumption was that you want to lower the voting age. And, and when I started, I reviewed the charter sections that were relevant. And the question came up, I mean, you have to resolve this question if you lower the voting age because you can't lower the voting age and not change the rest of the charter unless you want to also lower the voting, the age for elected officials.
So the question on the table is, should we, should we make an age limit for, or age limit and the citizenship limit? For elected officials?
Right.
The answer could be yes, right? So the, so the straw poll could be yes. Do we agree that there should be an age limit on elected candidates? Yes, and we move on to the next issue.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
I think that's where we started.
Yeah, that's where I started.
And I think that, given where we started the conversation last time we discussed it, given the, given the, where we are in working through this, given the fact that Councilmember Daniels Cohen is not participating at this point, and I can imagine that she might say yes. And much as I have some difficulties in thinking about this and kind of going that step, I'm prepared to go that step to lower the voting age. I have real problems with lowering the voting age, lowering the qualifications for mayor and council member. I think that the right thing to do is to keep going on this and go through these questions and go through the process.
Okay.
I, I, I think that it's entirely feasible to go forward with the presumption that we would change the charter to lower the voting age as part of this, have the public hearing, and then based on the public hearing, make adjustments that are necessary, for instance, regarding who can run for office.
And I, and I'll, and I'll say that I thought it was a good idea to take the straw vote. I assumed that we were going to affirm that we wanted to do that and keep going.
Yeah.
You were opposed to it yourself, so why?
Well, I was, I, I had questions and I can, I can kind of put up my hand, but there weren't hands and it was like, oh my God, it's different.
And similar to the mayor, I'm happy to support limitations on, on qualifications for elected office.
Let me just ask my question.
Sure.
Is that if you know already tonight, let me back up a minute. After the public hearing and all that, at some point, the city council has to vote on the charter amendment. And if we know now, speaking hypothetically, that four members of the city council are opposed to lowering the voting age, speaking hypothetically, why would we want to go through this whole long process to know that basically the city council is proposing a public hearing on something that it doesn't support, a majority doesn't support? I mean, that's a hypothetical question. I'm not saying that it's a four to three vote or anything like that. But we just had a, an indication that it could be.
Yeah, I mean, I think that the, the problem that we just have is that it's better to put forward some document to the public so that they can read through it. And so direction as to what that document says is what we're trying to get. You know, however you vote on it, when you vote on it, that's, that is up to you. But in terms of what goes to the public so that they know what they're going to come and talk about, I think that's the important part for tonight.
And I think, given where we have gone so far, we need to follow through on that public hearing and we need to provide language.
Yeah, and you can amend, you can hear, hear public comments, amend, you know, at first reading. You could revise, you could revise at second reading. You can go forward as written, of course.
And I'll just say, it's, it can be difficult to work through some of these issues. We've had experience with this, with potential charter amendment in the recent past. We know that it can be contentious. We know that it can create difficulties and questions about working relationships. But we have to follow through on these things. And we know that having a, having an opportunity for the community to comment can provide valuable input to people in trying to work through the best conclusion on this. Councilmember Grimes.
I'll, I'll say that we saw before us during the public comment period at the start of tonight's meeting, oh, I don't know, how many younger folks were in this room under the age of 18? My guess is at least 12 to 15. It's hard to know who might have been 18 or a little bit older. And I have no doubt that they will go out in the community and work with their peers to energize them and their families and others they know to take part in the discussion when we do have it.
So I think, I think at this point, we should assume that we are going to public hearing. We are going to have language that is drafted, that proposes lowering the voting age. And that we can then see if we want to provide some language that talks about lowering the, changing, changing the qualifications in the language section for mayor or how we want to deal with that, which is where we were a little while ago. So.
So the answer is yes, you would probably want to establish a minimum age for mayor and council. And we could suggest something which you could change later. So that, that works.
That's.
So then, section 308 talks about vacancies on the council. And part of that process is if, if a vacancy occurs more than 60 days before the next election, there has to be a special election and that you get on the ballot by petition. And I just want to confirm that, we'd like you to think about whether you want petitioners to be able to register on the day they sign a petition. And there are several other places where petitions are part of the electoral process overall. Petitioning to, petitioning a charter amendment to referendum, petitioning to get something on the ballot for an advisory referendum and a recall petition. There's, I think, four places where there are petitions. And are you thinking that in those situations that you would allow people to register on the day they sign a petition?
Councilmember Grimes.
The, my short answer is yes, that I would change the initiative from election day voter registration to something that it's often called, which is not exactly synonymous, which is same day registration. There would have to be a mechanism where the person would, who wishes to sign a petition or do anything like that, and this would apply to the nominating caucus as well, would have to file the registration through a proper mechanism, probably directly with the city clerk's office or a city clerk designate. But the answer is yes, I would change this to same day registration for any electorally related action.
Other comments?
Anybody else have a comment on that?
Just a second, like Councilmember Grimes said.
Other thought, other.
No opposition to?
Well, I was, I was going to ask if there's other thoughts from people who are having not as easy of a time as the proponents in, in working their, our way to a comfort level on these things.
And again, we could do the final drafting with the assumption that same day registration would apply for these petition processes. And the council could choose to go forward with it or choose to back out later.
Generally speaking, I, I'm comfortable with same day registration.
In, in all instances?
Yeah, I think in all instances.
Okay, okay.
Not sure I see where there needs to be a distinction between registering to petition and registering to vote.
Councilmember Mail.
I just wanted to say, as more of a general comment, and I don't know how my colleagues would feel about this. In general, I'm a fan of trying to do as little as possible in the charter. So anything that doesn't absolutely have to be in the charter, in some cases, even if it's already in the charter, but it doesn't have to be there, I'd rather try to avoid those things just because, as everybody knows, it's easier to change something if it's not in the charter. So would anyone disagree with that? It doesn't reference this specific thing, but.
Don't know.
Yeah, I, I think we'd have to craft the same day registration language in the charter such that it applied to everywhere it's going to apply. So, so I think we probably, it would need to be in the charter.
Okay, so, so it sounds like there's no particular difficulty with a broad interpretation of same day registration for purposes related to electoral areas.
Okay, so. All right, so registration, let's see, sorry, one, two. I've gone through page one. Page two, there I wanted to confirm that you wanted to stick with 16 on or before the date of the next election. And from the conversation you've just had, that's my understanding that you want to, that's where you're headed. For section 603, registration, and this is, as I was reviewing the charter and, and since you're planning to amend it anyway, I was recommending a couple of cleanup of things. And one of the things is in section 603, registration, I wondered if this may be an appropriate time to go ahead and reduce the number of days for regular registration to 21 days to match the state and move away from 30 days, which is pretty far in advance. And I think it might be a little less cumbersome to do it at 21 days for a variety of reasons. And part of it has to do with the day that 30 days falls, always falls on the oddest day. It always falls on Columbus Day, Sunday, and then there's Columbus Day, and it's just a real mess. I'm not, it's, it always.
So give it a 30.
Yeah, so.
And at 21 days, it's always a Tuesday.
Yeah, and it's, that's the state guideline. So my recommendation is to just reduce it to 21 days.
Comments on that? Councilmember Smith and then Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you.
That's something that I would support. I think making it 21 days would be great to make, so that there's less work for the election board. But the part, the second part, the 30 day residency requirement, if we have same day voter registration, why do, do we need a residency requirement?
Well, that's a question for the council. Do you want, do you want someone to be able to move into Tacoma Park a week ago Tuesday and come in and vote on Tuesday? Do you, does the council want a residency requirement or not?
I think if there's going to be same day voter registration, you shouldn't, residency requirement shouldn't be part of it.
Do we know what Rockville or other states do?
Have, may have.
Maybe Seth can find that. I'm not, I'm not sure about that.
Well, Seth is looking.
Councilmember Schultz.
If you have same day residency, I guess, in other words, you don't have to be a resident prior to the day you vote, how would somebody who is doing this be able to provide proof satisfactory to the registrar that they are an occupant of the city? I mean, I mean, I'm not, I can think of some hilarious situations, but I'm just trying to think of a very practical situation. Do they, do they bring their, their lease?
Well.
Do they bring their title to their house with them?
Yes, or you could do it by, as proposed, you would be able to, to bring someone who would swear to an affidavit that you were in fact, did in fact live next door.
On, on this topic, I, unfortunately, I don't have the documentation in front of me. There was a study by, it was either Demos or League of Women Voters that these people would have to appear in person to register, that the rate of voter fraud for people who are appearing in person, you know, with proper identification and so on, is negligible. These are, these are studies that were done that I can try to dig up.
Well, I'm, I'm not thinking so much of people trying to commit fraud.
How would you prove it?
I'm just thinking of the administrative side of it because the registrar needs to, you know, not be trying to exercise his or her judgment at, at that sort of situation. That person needs to be able to follow a rule so that they can tell that applicant, you have to provide this or you don't. I mean, otherwise.
Otherwise, you can end up with whoever's responsible for doing it saying, there is no standard. Everybody who wants to vote, votes.
This person is going to show up with identification and will have the person's address presumably. I suppose the address could be falsified on a driver's license or something like that. But it is a criminal.
But if you just moved here today, how do you have it?
It is a, yeah, that's a good question. You could, you'd have to prove it. You'd have to affirmatively prove it. But in any case, if you, in any case, if you, if you lie here, then you are, then you are committing a criminal act and you could be charged under the law.
I think what Councilmember Schultz is worried about is not fraud, but how does one come up with something that, where there are standards where whoever is trying to certify this can say they produced X or they had a sworn statement, you know, witnessed by somebody or whatever it is that doesn't.
I, I know that I've seen, I don't know where, but I know that I've seen this idea of having someone vouch for you who is recognized and all that kind of stuff.
Exactly, an affidavit by another, a registered voter in your ward, for instance.
Well, whatever, and if there's precedent for it, then great. In another community, city, let's find that and figure that out because it's just a practical question.
So this would, that, those particular, the, the proof of residency would not be in the charter. That would be in the code. So that, the specific criteria can be set up later in the code.
If you had to back it off, you know, one day. If you had to back it off, you know, one day residency or two-day residency, I mean, you're hardly going to discourage very many people from, from voting, but at that day, but 24 hours instead of zero hours, might make it, might make it a whole lot more practicable to do.
All right. The City of Rockville, I have their charter in front of me, portion, which, thank you, the city clerk gave me at some point. It includes a provision of, the person must submit either a, must submit a county or city voter registration form and submit either a form of identification approved by the Board of Elections establishing identity and place of residence, or an affidavit in a form that has been approved by the Board of Supervisors of Elections attesting to the identity and place of residence of the person desiring to vote, which is executed by a person who is registered to vote, registered, is present with such individual, in other words, you're accompanied by someone. The person you're accompanied by with is registered to vote, and that person has personal knowledge of the actual residence of the individual seeking to register to vote. Such affidavit shall be executed under the penalties of perjury. So we are allowing an attestation by a person who knows you and is subject to penalties of perjury.
That would have to stand up.
That's what Rockville does, and therefore we can conclude that it's acceptable under state law.
If they do it, my golly, it's good enough for me.
It is.
Is there a residency requirement?
I'm, you want to look at this? I don't know.
And I think that's consistent with Councilmember Smith's suggestion of allowing, of taking away this 30-day residency requirement, and I'm supportive of that as well if Rockville's found a way to do it, and presumably other communities have as well. There's also state legislation, right, that's been introduced?
I don't know. So that was my other question.
There are a number of state bills. Frankly, I don't know the disposition, but there was an enabling bill that would change the Maryland Constitution that's been submitted twice before. I simply don't know what the status of that is, though. It's not a change, it's enabling.
If, if I had to guess, I'd, I'd guess that the state bills probably won't make it very far.
No. There's a state senator who has blocked it in previous years, and my understanding is that person's probably blocking it again.
So essentially, should we, should I draft this with no residency requirement, a reduced residency requirement?
And the, and the residency.
For voting in city elections.
Day of residency requirement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's, that's the second question here in 603, right?
So then there's the question of same-day registrants and should they be voting, should their votes be provisional or not? Right, so, so there, there are two ways to go with this. One is to have people who register and vote on the same day would vote a provisional ballot that would later be checked by having the Board of Elections run through their verification process. The other, the other way to do it is to just have the person register and vote a regular ballot that would be cast based on the documentation and the criteria that we set up for reviewing their registration.
So would, would the Board of Elections' process be anything different than what was produced the day of, going through that?
Well, now, when I said the Board of Elections, what I meant was if, if we did provisional, it would be sending it off to the County Board of Elections to have them run their verification as they do with voters.
Which would be different than our process?
Yeah, they have access to databases with information about individuals, for instance, driver's license records and, that, that we, of course, don't have, so.
Which if somebody has just moved is unlikely to be changed.
That's right, that's right.
So therefore they might call something into question that, who knows?
Right, who knows, but.
Just a, I thought when we met with the Board of Elections that they had had some, I thought maybe the discussion moved toward not having provisional, but I just can't remember. Do you remember what they?
Right, I, I don't, I'm not sure they came down one way or the other. They, I think they're in an education process, and they, they, the Board has not, does, hasn't taken a position on this at this point.
Thank you. The, the packet includes a two-sided document from that organization I remember, mentioned earlier, Demos, requiring provisional ballots for same-day registration, few benefits, additional costs, is what they title it, and I guess that, you could read this yourselves, but the short answer is no, it wouldn't be a provisional ballot so far as I'm concerned. I, I will read once again from Rockville, and I lifted the Rockville code and put it in the draft that, is it in here? I can't recall. "The ballots of those registering on Election Day shall be kept separate from those previously registered and voting until such time not to exceed seven days, as the registration of each such person voting on Election Day at such polling place has been checked and is determined to be, and it is determined to the satisfaction of the Board of Supervisors of Elections that all such votes have been cast properly," and, and so on. So they don't mention sending it off to the county for verification, they just mention a seven-day of holding the thing, seven days being the maximum time to verify this. Maybe they send it off to the county or not, but that's not what they include.
That's funny, I had read that as, no, I'm familiar with it. I had read it as meaning they were sending it to the County Board of Supervisors of Elections.
Oh.
But if, but if they call their Board of Elections the Board of Supervisors of Elections, it could be internal.
It could be internal, yeah, I, I just read that differently.
Because I would, I would be comfortable with, if we're asking them, if we're asking people to provide documentation or a declaration to vote, same-day voting, to be, to kind of give our folks a chance to say, gee, thinking about it the next morning, there may have been something there that kind of slipped by, we want to look at it again, but not involving another set of, of criteria that the Board of Elections in Rockville, and, you know, the county one, might start doing that would set up potentially a whole, a difficulty.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good point.
Kind of, kind of our own definition of provisional, or, you know, provisional within our system.
I, I'm thinking that I like that idea, because take the election that Councilmember Mail just went through, that was a fairly close election, but let's say, I don't know what the separation of votes were.
Seven.
Seven.
Seventeen, okay.
But in a case like that, where there were a number of same-day registrations and you were on the short end of the vote, you'd like to think that there was some, some fairly quick, reasonable, within the, within the city, without necessarily going outside the city, to, to verify any votes that, that the supervisor of elections may have, his or herself, have had. I mean, you know, candidates have a right to ask for recount in all elections, and this would seem to be not unreasonable if it wasn't going to take a month of Sundays to get done. It would help, I think, to preserve the integrity. I don't know, I mean, just thinking of what it would feel like to be the loser on a very, very close vote.
I guess one of the things that I'm just trying to think about is, is the logistics, because I, because I can imagine that by not having a provisional ballot, that when a person comes up, they have not registered, they want to vote, we will need to ensure that there is enough time to do a fair check as part of the registration process to feel comfortable that then the ballot's fine. I mean, so I think part of it's just kind of a decision about how the logistics of the day might pass.
Councilmember Grimes.
We each have potentially different standards of comfort with these laws and so on. I will just explain my own, which is that, well, first I'll say the state of North Dakota has actually no voter registration at all. You show up and you can vote if you're in North Dakota. I would guess there aren't too many people who are going to fly to Fargo or whatever to, in order to vote on a particular day.
This morning.
But in any case, to me, I'm satisfied, I would be satisfied with someone showing up with the attestation that Rockville uses where a neighbor says, yep, I'm a registered voter and under penalty of perjury, I will attest that this person who's with me lives at such-and-so address within the city. I'd be satisfied with that or an acceptable form of identification, acceptable to the Board of Elections. I just see the benefits here in terms of getting new voters out, including people who a candidate in tight race pulls along in some kind of train to the city hall in order to vote. Isn't that the point, to get additional people engaged who have not been engaged previously?
Yeah, but this.
Isn't the point to get people engaged who have not been engaged previously? I, I just see the potential benefit here as outweighing the risk of fraud cases, which, yeah.
I'm not saying that we would, this would do anything to discourage same-day registration, same-day voting, whatever you want to call it. So those people would vote. It's just what it does is it gives the people who are in charge of the election some breathing space, so that if they have to make a judgment, they, they know, unlike an umpire at a baseball game, that they have a chance to, to have a little bit of time to go back and double-check on something, to make sure that they were right. I wouldn't want to deprive that supervisor of that election of that, the privilege to being able to do that. And it doesn't discourage anybody from voting. In fact, the voter's never even going to know. They're going to cast a ballot. That's, because your goal is to get as many people voting as possible, so, and I'm not arguing against that, I don't think.
Councilmember Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just trying to, to go back and remember what's the, what is the problem we're trying to solve, and so I can measure this against, you know, what is it that we're trying to accomplish? And I think it was just as Councilmember Schultz just said, is to maximize the number of voters that participate in our election. And so I'm not sure that, you know, how this measures up against that goal, whether, you know, five days to verify it, or 30 days to verify it, or whatever the, whatever it is.
How long would it take to do what, this internal thing without going outside the city?
Internally, we would, to, the morning after the election, it would internally, because all it would be, as, as, as it was presented here, all it would be is a double-check on the documentation that was provided at the time of registration, if, if that was what you wanted.
So it would just, it would just mean that you have the affidavit and that that, and that person was a resident of the city, a registered voter.
I'm sorry. Ask me again.
I'm saying the verification would just be that you actually have a signed affidavit.
A signed affidavit or copies of the documentation that they provided.
Yeah, I mean, the only, the only thing that I can just imagine is just that if you've got a bunch of people trying to register quickly, that you might want to double-check just to make sure that you weren't sloppy in how you processed it.
Yeah, because I, I can imagine all of a sudden it gets really busy, and, and you're dealing with a bunch of people at once, and you go, gee, we kind of moved quickly through that, let's just double-check.
You're not going to, you're not going to check, go out and check for a driver's license, you're not going to go knock on their door and say, you really live here, just check the paperwork.
So I should, we should draft it as if they are provisional or not provisional? Or both ways, you can decide later.
Not provisional, it's my preference.
If it's, if it's provisional, we would have to divine, define provisional so that we know some future clerk or Board of Elections doesn't say, well, that means we have to send them to Rockville.
No, it, it's, yeah, right. It, it would be defined, yeah.
So whatever you call it, as long as you define it, we'll trust you to come up with the right language on that one.
All right.
Once again, the, the Rockville mechanism is not provisional, and it's one that's acceptable but to the state and that has been used in the Rockville city elections.
Their mechanism is provisional.
Yeah, it is provisional, it's for five days.
If they have to check.
It's not provision, okay.
It is provisional.
Now, it says that it may be held up to five days. They shall be kept separate, but it doesn't say they're provisional.
That is a provisional.
Separate is provisional.
Right.
Yeah.
So we can do like them and hold them separate and not call it provisional.
But not for seven days. There's no holding.
Because there's.
Again, it's not to exceed.
Right, so our, our election calendar is, is faster.
Is 24 hours.
Yeah, so it's basically 24 hours, so anything, any resolution to be done has to be done early the next day.
Okay.
So you can forget about sending it to the county.
Yeah, there's no, right, not, not in that time frame.
And you can forget about sleep the night after the election.
Right.
She always does.
We should be so lucky that there are a lot of people who use this mechanism.
Right.
Well, why don't we do a 24-hour provisional as part of the language?
Okay.
And you can always change it.
I can, I, there was something earlier about the 21 days versus 30. Is it possible and desirable to just say whatever the state limit is, is ours?
I was thinking the same thing.
Mm-hmm. That way, if the state changes, it, ours changes.
Yeah, the technology changes and so on.
Yep.
Yes.
Good idea.
Yeah.
Mark, mark down, Councilmember Grimes, one bridge.
Right, and, and kind of following up on what Councilmember Mail said, where we have those options, we should do that.
Mm-hmm.
So then, this, as drafted now, and it's, we would presumably have same-day registration for participation in the nominating caucus, that's under section 604. So we would have basically the same, you would provide the same proof that you would provide on the day of voting to participate in the nominating caucus, and that would be something.
To be consistent, I think that makes sense.
Right.
Anybody disagree? Okay, we'll take care of that one.
Okay. So then, one, two, okay, nominations.
Tell us what section you're on.
Okay, 605, no, just skip 605, that's not important. 609, early voting. Here, it's just, my recommendation is to add a section on early voting, because that wasn't included in our charter before, and if we include it, we can really call it early voting and not early absentee voting or in-person absentee.
So we've, so we've been doing it, but we call it something different?
Yeah, we've been calling it, yeah, it's not really early voting.
Absentee in person?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I would just, I mean, up to 10, something, something, I would just propose two parts. One, that the language say up to, so it doesn't quite tie your hands, and then 10 days, is 10 days reasonable?
Yeah, well, yeah, that's the second question, the amount of time.
Councilmember Grimes.
Well, once again, okay, so there are also state initiatives. This one introduced by the governor, I believe, to extend the early voting period. We could just reference whatever the state is, that's possibly going to be a lot longer than what we're talking about.
Because their election calendar is a lot.
Your nominating caucus.
Yeah, I.
Well, okay, anyway, just, just put that one aside. This is, this is maybe an example where we can put in the charter that there shall be voting, and then it shall be via procedures that are established in city code, getting to Councilmember Mail's point about trying to keep stuff out of the charter where possible.
Okay, so just take out the second sentence, just leave the first sentence, the council may by ordinance establish locations, days and hours for early voting in any city election. I had a second sentence that said the period of early voting shall not begin sooner than the Wednesday prior to Election Day.
Okay. Might you want to add the word mechanisms in there, establish locations, days and hours and mechanisms for early voting, because right now that's a separate mechanism from.
People could mail in or whatever.
Well, I guess that's absent.
Absentee voting.
My one hope for this section was that, I have more hopes than just one, but, but the one I'll focus on is that I would want us, I can't think of a situation where I, where I wouldn't want early voting to be part of the process, and so whether there's anything in here that the council may by ordinance, you know, like the council shall by ordinance, instead may, establish locations, days and hours for early voting, which shall be offered for every election, you know, something that. like the council shall by ordinance, instead of may, establish locations, days, and hours for early voting, which shall be offered for every election. You know, something that sort of ensures that even if it's only one day early voting, that there's always a chance for early voting. Because to me, it seems like, again, thinking about Councilmember Simmons' statement about, you know, what is our purpose here? Our purpose is to encourage turnout, and clearly, again and again, you read studies that talk about how important this is, just even having one more day is to getting people to vote. And so, you know, to me, the, finding a way to write that in, that there, you know, will always be early voting, and then the details of which shall be established by, by, by code.
Sounds cool.
Shall, sounds good.
Provisional voting, depending on, changes to read, a person may cast a provisional ballot in a city election if the persons, I had changed it, eligibility to register and vote, or identification or identity is challenged. Since you're kind of leaning towards the provisional, that same-day registrants would be voting provisionally, I probably would not, I would revise this in a slightly different way.
Okay.
To be determined, but I think that's not to worry about. Advisory referendum, that's the petition question again. Section 612 answered that. Vote count, so I posed the question, does the council wish to extend the time before the election must be certified? I think the way you've described provisional and the way that the check, the provisional ballot would only be to allow a second check in-house of the documentation that was presented, would not require extending the time for certification. I mean, as, as the way you're headed now, I don't think that's an issue, so. Petition signers, that's it. I've essentially gone through everything. The one other change that I had, went ahead and made was changing the who's eligible to vote, and really, that was just to track the state law, and I'll ask the city attorney, that's in Section 601, and I'll ask the city attorney to draft a statement that says it should match whatever the state requirements are. So I think that's pretty straightforward. I think that's it. I think, I think I understand where you're headed and what you want the language to say at this point. So my plan is to just bring the final language back. I don't think there'll be any need to go through it, but give the council a chance to ask any questions about that. And the proposed calendar that was on your cover sheet is we would have a final review of charter language on April 1, the public hearing on April 8, first reading April 15, second reading April 22. And so the effective date of the charter amendment would be June 11. And I think that gives the Board of Elections time to incorporate these changes into any procedures to be developed.
Okay. Councilmember Smith.
Is this a time that we can propose changes that we would like to see, or?
If you've got something, yes.
Okay. This would be on Section 601, qualification of voters.
Can you tell me what page you're on?
Six. Six. I would, I would like to see on Section B regarding individuals convicted of a felony. And I would like to say, I would like it to say, and is not actually serving a court-ordered sentence of imprisonment, including any term of parole, probation, or community supervision.
Okay. And if this was not qualified to be a registered voter, if the individual, the way it reads now, if the individual has been convicted of a felony and is actually serving a court-ordered sentence of imprisonment?
Right. So I want it to take out the fact that they might be under parole or, or probation.
I need to point out something about changing these details, and that is that, as it is now, U.S. citizens who registered to vote must register through your standard state, county registration process. The only separate list that I keep is the list of non-citizen voters, who of course can't, can't register this way. If we change these qualifications, it means keeping, potentially, what it means is that our voters couldn't still have...
Qualifications are different for the two groups.
Yeah.
They'd be different from the state, so we'd have to keep a separate list.
We'd have to keep our own voter registration.
Why do we even have to be at all? Because noting that C says changes that the state shall automatically be incorporated into B, why not just say anyone who's disqualified by the state is disqualified by the city?
We could say that, but that doesn't get to...
Who's a citizen, anyone who's a citizen. I mean, the state would cover only citizens, so non-citizens wouldn't be covered by that.
But you weren't talking about non-citizens. You're talking about U.S. citizens and changing the voting requirements for U.S. citizens.
Correct.
Or reducing the...
Exclusions.
Exclusions.
And that's, you're saying that's not allowed by the state?
I really don't recommend that. I, it would mean having a separate, it would mean that people could not register through the state to vote in our elections. I think that's, I, I haven't really expressed my opinion on anything here. I think that's a bad idea. I don't, I, I don't think we want to get into registering, making people register separately through us. I have a question, though. Is there, just as we have the non-citizen voting, could we have a separate list of people who are on parole or probation? So that the normal citizen voting stays the same, but then there's a third list, essentially?
Freedom of non-citizens.
I mean, I'm just, you know, that's the alternative to that.
Councilmember Simmons.
That's right.
Thank you. First of all, I certainly appreciate Councilmember Smith's suggestion, and I understand where he's coming from on this. And in fact, this is a way that many of our residents have been disenfranchised through, and we won't get into the whole discussion about the drug laws in this country, but many people have been disqualified from participating in the community through this mechanism. And yet, I, I don't think we're talking about, you know, thousands of people, but we are talking about people who are community members and can participate in the community. And it would be a process that would be similar to the, the immigrants who are not qualified to vote, that we would have, they would be added to the list in a similar fashion, the ones who could not register with the state to vote, and they would be able to register with us. So just be adding an additional characteristic that would allow them to be added to the list of, that we now keep separate.
Tell me, think about how this works. So, so someone would come to me and say, I'm not able to register to vote because X, Y, Z.
Because I'm a convicted felon, and I am currently on probation, so I'm not able to register with the state of Maryland to vote.
So I'd like to register with the city.
But I would like to register with the city of Tacoma Park, just as undocumented immigrants can today.
Councilmember Mail.
Can make it work if the council wants it.
And I think if, I wonder if a way to craft that in language would be to do something like Councilmember Grimes suggested, to sort of refer to the state law, but have an except as applies under, you know, the new C or D. And then there, it says, you know, otherwise eligible voters who are currently under parole may register by, you know, the language from the, the non-citizen language about register with the city clerk or whatever it says. Would that be a way to, to make it clear for most people that the registration process remains the same, but that there's also this alternative route, without doing too much, creating too many changes elsewhere?
And I guess what I would like to, maybe give you some time to think about this, because I don't want to outvote you, I would like to persuade you.
It's not my place to outvote anybody, but...
But you do administer the system, and so I would like to give you time to think it through, to see how it could be implemented.
Actually, if both, both of you could maybe send me some information that would help me think, anybody who has any thoughts about this. I'm sure we can make anything work that you want to have.
Well, we know you could.
But my first reaction was, I just didn't, I just didn't want to be creating a whole other, you know, that people would register through us. It just feels too random. I just, but if there's a way to do it.
But I think, I think if we think it through, that it's quite similar to what we already do, it just adds another characteristic that allows a person to be added to that list.
And they would self-identify as non-citizens, self-identify.
Right. And again, I don't think it's doubling the size of the list.
Right. Okay, so I would include this in the, we would include this in the draft.
I have a concern, I have two concerns here. This is a question. Is there any presumption of privacy on the behalf of someone who is a felon, or is that a public record? Is it a public record when someone is on parole or probation? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. So, because voter rolls are public, they're, and so on. So that answers one. The concern I have is when a person graduates from the necessity to have this registration, then, number one, we want to encourage that person to file a conventional registration, and then if the person does, we want to get that person off of our voter rolls, off the special voter roll. The person might move out of Tacoma Park and register somewhere else, and because the normal mechanism would be to report back to the previous registration jurisdiction, we might not hear about it. I, I'm not saying this is a huge obstacle. I don't think it's actually going to happen very often. There are a lot of hypothetical points here, but that is something that maybe could be addressed as well, if there's a way to do it.
Mm-hmm.
In other words, getting people, graduating people from this role when they are eligible to vote or register through a conventional mechanism.
Interesting, okay. Anything else?
That's better than, ah, no.
At 11:23 at night.
Are we good? I think I know.
Oh, we know we're good. Are we finished?
Well, there's the last part.
Oh, what's the last part? Did I?
Well, there's the proposed revision to landlord-tenant code. I did speak to the Assistant City Attorney, Ken Segman, on Friday, who had questions about it. I think he had only begun to look at this, and I gave him references to the state of Minnesota, which has provisions very similar to this, and then there's Canadian federal law that does, so he's still working on it, but I don't, were we going to discuss whether anyone has views on this tonight?
I wasn't thinking you were going to discuss this tonight unless you want to. That the landlord-tenant item will come back with the, with the housing code revisions, that's the last part of that, so that's going to come back then. The resolution, the ordinance resolution, I have not worked on that, and to be honest, I am. With the, with the resolution, I'd recommend, Tim, with your drafted, your item, that you drafted, you and whoever drafted, the ordinance resolution item. I'd recommend that it be, it needs to be an ordinance and a resolution, and an ordinance to do the code amendment related to the Board of Elections, so that would be an ordinance. The resolu, it could all be an ordinance, but that has to be an ordinance. The, there's a part of that resolution that deals with the council requesting the state and federal Congress to do certain things. That could be its own resolution. That would be my recommendation. And then there's the resolution establishing the task force on elections. So that would be yet another resolution. My suggestion would be to divide it all up, but it could be either way. It would just all have to be one big ordinance if you don't divide it up into separate things.
But it could be put forward as a group.
It could be put forward as a group. With the election task force, what the Board of Elections and I are asking you to delay starting that, because we're all in an election year, really winding up for the next election. And I'm afraid that we won't properly be able to participate in that. And I recognize it's not that you're going to be appointing, the council will appoint new people to that, and it's not the Board of Elections, but they will have a role to play in that.
Sure. And so if I'm understanding your suggestion, it's not that we delay moving this forward, but that rather we delay its effective?
Yes.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, just not, not start it up before the election.
Start it on November 20th instead of, no.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
That's fine. I was joking about November 20th, but I, I understand.
But just because we, I certainly want to at least be able to follow it closely and be helpful where I can, and, and the Board of Elections is hoping that one or two members of the board would be appointed to that task force as well.
Okay, anything else? We're turned.
You're kidding.